He said we're ready.
Can I hear?
No.
I can, yes.
Yeah, okay. Ellen, you can hear us? Ellen, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, so I think we can start. Okay, it's six oh four. We will call the committee to order of the Naussett Regional School Committee. It's Thursday, October 10. Please note that as required by the open meeting law, we are informing you that the district will be videotaping this public meeting. In addition, if anyone else intends to either video or audiotape this meeting, they are required to inform the chair. So with that, we'll get started. Agenda changes, just a couple of things. Me on your list, priority business, Dr. Taylor Rye, technology update. He's going to join us at our next meeting on October 24th. We have, or had, a very full agenda and we didn't want to squeeze Taylor since he's coming for the first time to us. So we're gonna put him on the 24th when we have, we know we got some extra time. Also, depending on how the time goes, we've got some things at the end that we may cut or defer until the 24th meeting. We've got some policies and we have got a slew of mask resolutions. So we might cut those in half and do the other half. So those would be only agenda change. Anything else?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, citizens speak. Are there any citizens out there or people that would like to participate in public comment? Could so, raise your little yellow hand and be recognized.
Yeah, Laura.
Can you see yellow hands?
Yeah.
Laura, okay, Laura. Arlen, can you let her in?
There she is. She's coming in. Where did she go?
Can you see me and hear me? There you are. Okay, Laura. Want to say your name and then you're... Then talk to us.
All right, I'm Laura Bagetti. I am Wellfleet resident. My daughter is an eighth grade student at Naussett Regional Middle School. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts on the eighth grade field trip. A few weeks ago, my daughter informed me that the school had decided to take eighth graders on an overnight trip to Boston instead of Washington DC. She mentioned that the students were surveyed on activities they would like to do in Boston. I understand that you are voting on this matter tonight and while it may not change the outcome, I want my daughter to know that I advocated for her when she felt her voice wasn't heard. I was curious why this decision was communicated to the students but not their families. I reached out to Principal Cohen and he explained that the change was made to reduce costs as last year's trip had limited participation due to financial barriers despite the availability of scholarships. He assured me that Boston itinerary aligns well with the educational goals for the trip, offering both curriculum connections and enjoyable activities for the students. I fully appreciate the cost can be a significant factor, but the students have been involved in fundraising efforts this year and last. I'm aware that some students from last year's trip did not need to pay out of pocket due to the funds raised. And historically, no student has been excluded due to financial constraints. While I understand that asking for assistance may be difficult for some families, I do not believe this should be a reason to alter a longstanding tradition. These students were told last year that they would be traveling to Washington DC and now that plan has changed. We teach our students to trust the adults in their lives and yet they are faced with a decision that contradicts what they were led to expect. While Boston has a rich history, its focus is primarily on the early period of our nation's birth. In contrast, Washington DC offers a broader and more immersive learning experience covering various aspects of our nation's history. From the Vietnam and Korean War memorials to the Holocaust museum, the African American museum and the Lincoln Memorial where Dr. King delivered his "I Have a Dream" speech. The educational value of a visit to our nation's capital is unparalleled. It provides a unique opportunity for students to connect their classroom learning, particularly in eighth grade civics to real world experiences. I am deeply disappointed that these students will miss out on such a valuable opportunity, especially as many of them have never traveled outside the state even though they may have visited Boston. I'm also concerned about the lack of transparency in the decision-making process. It would have been beneficial for families to receive a detailed comparison of the costs, schedules, and trip options. A survey of families at the end of last year would have allowed us to share our preferences and make a collective decision. Had the decision been based on input from both students and their families, I would have fully supported it. Unfortunately, the process seemed to be conducted without sufficient input from those directly it directly affects. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, is there anybody else out there that would like to participate in public comment? Sandy? Arlen, can you let Sandy in?
Sandy Valley.
Valley? Sandy Valley?
Right, on the bottom.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay. Sandy, are you there? You're muted.
Sorry, I was, I'm at the Naussett High School volleyball game.
How are they doing?
They're losing.
Oh, well, that's okay.
But they're fine.
They're having fun.
Yeah.
So you wanted to participate in public comment?
I do, I do.
Can you get your name and town you're from, please?
Sure. I'm Sandy Valley and I'm from Wellfleet.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, football players. So I'm super disappointed and then I really hope that the board will reconsider and give the kids the opportunity to go to DC. My daughter, Ami, has actually just had a racial incident. I've been in contact via email with Principal Cohen and the teacher. And this racial incident came from the teacher. She made an inappropriate joke and excused herself as being allowed to make this joke about a race, about a language, because her friend is that race. And then she continued to go and say some pretty just unacceptable things. She didn't seem to be super apologetic, only making excuses. And this is not the first time she's done this in the classroom. My daughter asked me not to speak up last year because it was the end of the year. I know that Naussett is working hard. We've met with Principal Cohen back when we had Dr. Baskin's little fiasco. And I know that Naussett is working hard to tackle this racism issue and I know it's terrible. And I think that the DC trip would be a really huge factor in that. It'll show the kids that they are not from, you know, kind of a generic community. We have more races coming in, but generically, it's, it's, you know, it's pretty, pretty just one race. So it'll show them that it's a bigger world and DC is a melting pot. So I think, I mean, for me, that's one major factor. I think that it would be important for the kids to see. And secondly, I feel that this grade in particular had the incident in Brewster with that inappropriate teacher. And I think that these kids have lost their faith in the education system. And I think that's why you're having a little bit of a problem with some behavior. I think this is an important time for you to stand up and follow through. You said these kids were going to DC. I think it would be important to show them that educators mean what they say. I think they've all been let down and I think it's a valuable lesson.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Anybody else out there for public comment? Raise. No other hands? Okay, Sandy, Laura, thank you very much for coming. And we will move on. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is gifts, grants, and fundraising. I will note that it's for all the fundraising activities listed up in the front of our packet, not for those associated with the trips that are down with the trip request. So it's the high school Quebec trip, chess club, Scholastic Book Fair, and Naussett volleyball, and our minutes. So any questions?
I got a question about the chess club. It doesn't say what they're doing. Does anybody know?
I have a turnip.
Oh, like a chess tournament?
I believe.
Oh.
I'm seeing the same thing. I think it says.
Scorecard chess tournament.
Yeah.
It looks like it's kind of a...
Need to zoom in.
Thank you.
Sean didn't talk to me about this, but every year at Thanksgiving, he has a chess tournament. I assume that's what it is.
Okay, that's what it says. Great.
Motion? I move that we approve the chess tournament. The consent agenda for October 10th.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other comments? Okay.
Oh, I have a comment slash question. Just on that, maybe I missed something last, like last meeting also, but on the heels of our public comment, is there any interest in discussion around? I mean, I know that we do not set field trips in the sense that we can't like tell them to go to DC instead of Washington.
What of your requests?
Oh, we're doing them separate. They're usually in the consent agenda. Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, this is the separate trip.
This is. They used to be up top. Ignore me.
Okay.
Ignore me.
Done, done. Ignored. Okay, we're all here. We don't have to take the roll call vote. So all votes in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand. All opposed? Approved. Okay, we will move on. Our student reps, oh yes, Savannah. Savannah is here. Annabelle is going to be late, I am told.
She's here.
Oh, she's here.
Where are you going? Where are you sitting?
All right. Oh, I'm looking at the pictures. Okay, let's go. Savannah, you want to start? Can you join us? Turn on your video, your audio. There she is. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Savannah Sanatorian, eighth grader representing Naussett Middle School. And my classes are going well this year. And one of my favorite classes is science because we're learning about the weather and the hurricane going on in Florida. School council also just began last week, I think around Tuesday. I'm running cross country at the high school and we have a twilight meet in the evening on Saturday this weekend at the Barstool County Fairgrounds. Many eighth graders are also playing field hockey and soccer at the high school. And middle school sports are also going well. Last week, letters went out to National Union Honor Society and applications are due tomorrow for them. And we also are using Chromebooks this year for sixth, seventh, and eighth. And we've switched from iPads to Chromebooks, which is going well and people like them a lot. We're also doing a composting thing during lunch. So students will put their like extra food in these buckets so that it doesn't get wasted. And so, yeah, that there's less waste and it's more sustainable for the future in Cape Cod. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you tonight. And thank you, Dr. Cohen, for asking me to participate.
Well, it's always good to hear from you, Savannah. Anybody have any questions for Savannah? So your favorite subject is science. Nobody, no science teacher told you to say that. We just happen to have one here in the room, so I'm just wondering. But it was good timing. I got a certain perfect time.
I had her last year. I just wrote her on JHS.
You introduced a lot of science.
She has a wonderful teacher there.
Okay, thanks. And we will see you next month. Until then, you have a great year, month.
Thank you.
And now we need Annabelle. She's here.
It's great to be back this year on school committee. I have a couple of things to share with you this evening. So to start off, all the students are settling in nicely in the new buildings at the high school. The new science labs are great and the gym is being used by many classes and like gym classes as well as the sports teams after school. The cafeteria was designed well and there's many seating options for all students to sit in, like huge long tables for big groups or even small tables for a small friend, friend groups. And then there's also seating overlooking the courtyard if you wanted to sit by yourself. This week and next week are spirit week as Madam Dill is probably going to cover. All the classes are getting busy gathering fun spirit week decor for their hallways, which each senate group was designed to decorate. So yesterday, in honor of breast cancer awareness, the entire school dressed up in pink to spread awareness, which will be continuing every Wednesday in October, except for next Wednesday. So for spirit, for spirit day today, everyone's dressed in USA patriotic. And then tomorrow, everyone will be dressed in pajamas. And then next week on Tuesday is color war. So the freshmen are green, the sophomores are red, the juniors are blue, and the seniors are pink. And Wednesday is dynamic duo day, Thursday is decades day, and Friday is Naussett spirit day. And then next Saturday will be our homecoming dance at the high school cafeteria and courtyard, like a little mix from six to nine. And so we've had a fun couple of days and next week will be super fun with school spirit. And then lastly, all the sports teams are doing really well this season. And next Friday is the boys' homecoming football game at 6:30 at the high school turf. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
How was your field hockey game?
It was good. We put up a good fight. Unfortunately, we lost, but it was a good game.
Play hard, that's all you can do. Okay, any other questions for Annabelle? Yes, Annabelle. It's history's next. Okay, thanks, Annabelle.
Thanks, Annabelle.
See you next month. Okay, so now we move on to D. So we have a star among us. We have to come to the table.
How do I come to the table?
You want to give an intro there?
Ah, sure, yeah, this is.
She's not under the seat.
Come where I can see you.
So this is Amy Fleischer. She is some of the greatest science teacher. And she's here tonight because she's been recognized as the Barstool County Science Teacher of the Year by the Massachusetts Association of Science Teachers. It's a really significant honor and it's just so well deserved. So Amy has participated in some of the deeper learning training and really it's just doing really dynamic and innovative things in her classroom. It's a really structured class, kids, as you can see, like we did not set that up. Yes, Hannah, it's had Amy as teacher last year and now it's saying science is a favorite subject. I think there's probably a lot of students that say that as well. Deeper learning allows us to kind of, you know, have some more hand on experiences and make more connections and make the learning relevant. There's all sorts of cool connections. Amy reaches out to the community, brings in outside speakers. Just this week, or maybe it starts next week, we've got churroles that are coming in that we like foster over the course of the year, then release at the end of the year. Like, there's all sorts of just neat, dynamic things. And so it's a great recognition and very well served because she's an outstanding, outstanding teacher.
I think Amy gets more press in the principal's report over the years than anybody else because they have such cool pictures to show, so. Speech.
Thank you so much for the recognition and so many people in this certainly have worked with and I just really appreciate Dr. Cohen's support and everybody's support. And honestly, it's the kids. Like, I love going into my classroom every day and working with them. So they make this really worthwhile for me and they make me want to raise my game and do better, so.
Okay, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit because I see in this letter, they sent you a questionnaire so they could get your bio right. Now, we don't have your bio. Why don't you tell us how long you've been at Naussett and what brought you here?
Oh, sure. Okay, this is my 10th year at Naussett and before that I worked at the Wellfleet Band Wildlife Sanctuary as the education director. And I really had a wonderful time like teaching environmental education there. And I was like, I really need more time with kids. Like, I need to be with them in the classroom and following on these bigger projects with them. So I went to Bethany to receive my master's in science education in 2014. That's why I ended up came back to Naussett.
Never left back.
Never left back.
Well, we're lucky to have you. I've worked with Amy on the middle school council when we were doing school improvement plans and other things. And she's, she's always upbeat. She's always ready to pitch in and just a joy to be around, so congratulations.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, well, it's all easy. Okay, now that's all. All right, so we will go on, move on to our field trip requests. We have three of them. And the first one is the seventh grade French trip to Quebec along with three fundraising requests, so.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll.
Are you doing it?
Yeah, I'll speak about that.
In French?
I cannot.
I couldn't understand you anyway.
So, yeah, each year students in seventh grade that are part of the French program travel to Quebec in the spring in similar trip and format as they've used over the past couple of years anyways. It's usually somewhere around 30 to 40 students that attend with some chaperones and they take in the culture up there and are able to be immersed in the language for a couple of days and it's a really unique opportunity for kids to travel out of the country without having to hop on a plane. And it's been very successful in the past, fundraising. Efforts are similar to things that have been done in the past of the itinerary and the last trip as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about either the trip or the fundraising? Okay. Let's vote on these one by one because we can do it fast. So if I can have a motion?
I move that we approve the seventh grade French trip to Quebec and all the fundraising requests.
Okay, we're in second. Any more questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the seventh grade trip, raise your hand. unanimous? It's unanimous. Thank you, done. Quebec, here we go. Next, next is the eighth grade trip to Boston.
Okay, so as you've heard, we've decided to take the eighth graders to Boston for their overnight trip this year. So after, after COVID, or when COVID happened, overnight trips like this obviously disappeared. And for most schools, overnight trips haven't returned at the middle school level and most schools have been pursued DC. We did try to bring it back, we did last year, but we did find that for a whole host of reasons there were a lot of challenges with that trip. And so we got together with the chaperones at the, when they got back in June and kind of put our heads together to just reflect on what we did. We'd be better next year. And through those conversations, we settled on Boston being a better, a better opportunity. Ultimately, when we traveled to DC, we spent actually more time on the bus than we do at any of the monuments. And while the bus ride may be a highlight for some of our kids, it's, there's a lot of time on the bus. And, you know, certainly we can all probably just agree to the fact that like Washington is an awe inspiring city for sure. And we're not trying to compare Boston to DC, but we are trying to create as, as a unique and special an opportunity for kids to have an overnight trip. And again, when you pull the kids, what they really want is to stay overnight in a hotel anywhere where their parents aren't and their friends are. And so we try to inject some education as well. So we'd like to try this out this year to go to Boston. And we think that a combination of the curriculum connections and just logistics, the cost is, it's lower, but it's not the cost that's driving this decision. We do want to try to get everybody or as many students as possible to go on the trips or truly as a class trip to mark the end of their eighth grade year before they transition mostly to Naussett High School, but, but some go to other high schools too. So we do want kind of one last eighth grade memory, which is really the primary goal for this to get them together and have that experience. So we'd like to try it out and see. And then we'll go through the same process at the end of this year to kind of reflect on how the trip was and think about what we want to do the following year. But that's our, that's our proposal is to go to, not to DC but to Boston. But and it's one last, one last day away as well.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
One quick question. I see and Boston is wonderful. We've been here for a long time. I got to explore it. One of our favorite areas to go is Chinatown. And, you know, again, it's a diversity. It really immerses you in a different culture. Is there any way to again expand this wonderful itinerary to include some kinds of diversity in the trip?
Definitely. And it's like the tour company sort of gave that to us as a, as a potential itinerary, but there's still time for us to make adjustments to it, which is also easier to do with the city of Boston. And so, yeah, for sure. Yeah, and they also give us that kind of a menu of options for some of the fun activities too. Like, so there's the academic stuff and there's, there's fun stuff. And so a lot of things are on the table. At one point, they suggested maybe a Red Sox game, but in talking to students, there's only a portion of the class that would like be able to pay attention for nine innings of baseball games. And they're like not really interested, they said. So, you know, we're trying to come up with some fun activities as well. But yeah, there's lots of ways to tweak that to the way.
Another idea, which we might, I don't know whether it's too complicated to do, but to visit a school, to have some kind of exchange within another middle school that are the ones in public schools, which kind of give another perspective, sort of a way to be educated within the city. So just some of the creative ideas to sort of crack it up a little bit instead of just the tourist kind of thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Good, okay, good. Anybody else?
Hey, good question. Have you heard much feedback from the students about Boston versus DC? I ask only because, not that Boston is not special, it's very special, but because it's closer, a lot of students have spent time there. So DC was just like a more special place that a lot of people might not have the opportunity to go to otherwise. So I'm just wondering if you've heard any feedback from the students on.
Yeah, I mean, there is a little bit, there's one extra degree of separation between me and the students. So it's not really coming up to me correctly. And so I'm, I think there, you know, our, our students are just excited about going overnight, but I think there are some that were thinking it was going to be DC and now it's not. Interestingly, while I think a number of our students probably have been to Boston, maybe not in this, in this kind of capacity. And there's actually a number of students that actually haven't really spent much time there also. So I'm sure there's some opinions, but we've only kind of done some of the soft surveys of some of the activities they'd like to do as opposed to kind of doing the big, like, we're going kind of thing. So I think once we announce that this is happening, if it's happening, if it's approved, then, then we'll, we'll kind of get a sense of what the temperature is amongst the students for this. We'll do an information meeting for parents and everything as well. We haven't, we haven't done that yet until we get approval.
I just quickly, I just wanted to appreciate the parents that shared in their disappointment. As the parent of a child who went last year, I know how exciting it can be. I also want to share my appreciation to the staff for taking the time to really think about. Um, I also want to share my appreciation to the staff for taking the time to really think about what happened, how it happened, and what might be a better solution going forward. Um, just on that same note, uh, DC, it's a long trip on a bus for kiddos that age after having gone through that. Um, and I, I will reiterate that being together with your friends is really a big piece of that trip. So, um, while it's not DC, I think the experience of being together with your classmates and your friends is really the, the important piece, um, of that trip. So, so might you send them out?
Chris? Yeah, I, I, whatever, it's great stuff. It would be nice, um, through those traditional things, and, you know, they've all, they've gone to DC forever. And as you say, when COVID, it all of a sudden everything stopped, and nobody traveled anywhere, and that was not good. Um, so having trips coming, the, you know, going on again is an excellent thing. Um, but it should, it would be nice to just keep DC open as far as a possibility in the future if it is viable, uh, viable spot.
I, I just say, I appreciate that, you know, you're gonna go, you'll reflect on it afterwards. You know, you made a change this year, it will change next year. I mean, I think always looking for the best opportunity within the constraints that, that we have, I think is, is great, so. Okay, anything else?
In reality.
Reality, yeah, it, it just comes, it just comes back, doesn't it?
Ask one more question.
You may.
Um, so, uh, I know that a lot of the trips are sort of mirroring some of the things that are in the frameworks. So tell me about eighth grade, and is there, what kind of civics instruction is there? And how would, how did DC fit into that? And how can that be replaced by Boston in a meaningful way?
Yeah, the, the civics is the, is the focus of the curriculum in eighth grade, and so between like the, um, all the Kennedy Library stuff and the, and the Ted Kennedy, uh, Center as well, that, that is, um, really impressive, if you've ever been there. Um, and just it's in the State House, like, all of that will connect directly to, uh, to the six, uh, curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe we could get our representatives to come and meet sometime?
Yeah, take them to lunch.
Yeah.
Maybe dinner.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, that would be kind of exciting to see the law.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I imagine they would, if they would do it, so I mean, maybe not a tour or whatever, it's, it's a multiple.
If they're at the State House on the day of the visit, I'm sure they will.
Sure they are. But if they're not.
They love those photo ops.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got Jimmy Stewart's signature from my eighth grade, uh, DC. I know, ninth grade.
Straight rail.
Yeah, well, you were right.
Very cautious.
All right, anything else? All right, are we ready to vote?
I move that we totally, the eighth grade trip to Boston has dismissed with some.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, it's been moved in second, and anything else? All right, all those in favor of approving the eighth grade trip? Raise your hands. Opposed, none, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Um, and yes, thanks. Is Laura still here? She left. Um, okay, we have one more trip, and this is the Spanish trip to Puerto Rico. Um, Anne, can you come in and join us?
I am here. Can you hear me? For some reason, my video, I'm at school, and I'm on, I'm on my computer at school, and it, my camera's not working for me. I don't know if you can see me.
Obviously, we need a new school. Um, so yes, we can hear you, go for it.
Okay, I, I apologize. Uh, so, um, I'm Anne Layton. I am the AP Spanish teacher, um, here at the high school. I was at the middle school for fourteen years and did the, uh, New York trip, uh, for, uh, the seventh graders before COVID. And, uh, some of my kids, starting last year, um, said to me, "Mrs. Layton, we never got to go, um, to New York when we were in seventh grade, so we'd like to do something now." Um, this was my last year's, um, my juniors, who are now seniors in my AP class. So I promised them that if they stuck with Spanish and decided to come back to AP, um, and have me as their teacher, that I would, um, present to you, um, a proposal to do some kind of trip. Um, so this, I'm, I'm not sure if in the past, um, I don't think, at least it's been a long time since, um, the high school has done a Spanish trip. Um, and I'm not sure how long ago, i- if ever, they've done Puerto Rico, but we, as a class, talked about Puerto Rico because it's really a domestic trip. The kids don't need passports. Um, the price point for Puerto Rico as a domestic, um, destination is about half of what we'd be dealing with if we went to Spain, if we went to Mexico. Um, it's a shorter trip, so, um, it's four nights, and so we don't have to miss any school. This would be over April vacation. Um, and the kids reminded me, many of them are important, uh, restaurant workers and service workers, and, um, that's a, that's a holiday weekend, and we do get people on the Cape, so a lot of them said they'd like to not have to, um, miss, um, the, the long weekend, Patriots Weekend for their jobs. So we were able to settle on, um, Tuesday, the twenty-second of April, through Saturday, the twenty-fifth. Um, and so Puerto Rico to me seems like a really great way to start. Um, it's, they'll have a bilingual experience, really an immersion experience in Puerto Rico. I have experienced, I've, uh, been to Puerto Rico many times, so it's, it's a, still a familiar place to me. Uh, there, it's a good combination of colonial history, uh, they have architecture that goes back to the fifteen twenties. Um, still Columbus, I think, was still alive at that time, but, um, so there's some, so Old San Juan has that, um, colonial feel. Um, but we're also able to get into other things like, um, we're gonna go, uh, or the proposal is to go to the Yunkay, which is the only jungle that we have, um, in United States territories. Um, and as part of that jungle tour, uh, we'll be learning about the Taino, which was the indigenous population that was in Puerto Rico before, um, Columbus time, and there are petroglyphs. There are interesting things for students to see that there was life, um, before, um, Christopher Columbus came to the United, or came to, um, the Western Hemisphere. And then another part of it is, for a lot of students, I have an interest in biology, and, um, Puerto Rico has some interesting, um, interesting things. For example, the Bioluminescent Bay, I think it's only one of ten places in the world that has, um, you know, the, the glow, the glow in the dark ocean. Um, and so we have, uh, proposed a kayak tour at night, um, to, to go through and see, um, the Bioluminescent Bay. Um, there's also snorkeling, um, it's, it's, uh, I, I'm gonna admit to you that I am not going to be one of those snorkeling, but, um, my, I have with, um, the, the proposal with me, it's for twenty to twenty-four students. Um, the person who's gonna be, um, a chaperoning with me if this goes through, um, will be Jess Newell. Her son is a senior in IB, um, so that was the proposals that we do for AP and IB students. The students who've made it, who've gone through all of Spanish, all their years in high school, trying to reward them, um, for taking the time. But Jess is much more athletic than I am, so, um, she has agreed to be the one to do that part of it while I hang out. Um, for those who decide they don't want to do snorkeling, that's, that's, uh, how it's gonna work. Uh, but it's a, it's a really compact tour, a really, um, it has a lot of different things for students of different interests to enjoy. Um, I feel pretty confident, it's a pretty, for me being used to doing domestic New York trips, um, and I've never done an overseas trip with, with oversea, or with, uh, students. So to me, this is a great stepping stone to, to see how it goes with, with flying and not having to worry about passports. Uh, and, uh, figuring it out from there. It's, it's, it's the, it's the, the best compromise that we could come up with, um, to meet everybody's needs.
It sounds like a great, a great trip. Um, I, if, if it were twenty years ago, I, I'd offer to chaperone. A lot of which went into Puerto Rico. Um, any, uh, questions, Gary?
Yeah, I did go to trip.
Real quick question, um, and you mentioned, and it does sound very exciting, and, and kudos for planning this, especially where you don't need passports. And it's part of the US, and that's a whole nother, uh, discussion about, um, how this fits into the United States, how Puerto Rico fits. Um, you did though mention that it would be April twenty-second to April twenty-fifth. However, on all your documentation, it says the trip goes to the twenty-sixth.
Oh, is that what? My apologies, that is the April twenty-sixth, that Saturday. I was just looking, I, my apologies, that is the twenty-sixth. Thank you for catching that.
Well, the Ap- April twenty-second to twenty-sixth is what, what it is.
We're not, we're not approved.
The date act.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, uh, the, the dates will be.
Possible, because it's on the twenty-sixth, just yet.
Yeah.
But whatever.
Appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, yeah, go. I want to thank you for sticking with it. It's very thoughtful to allow the kids that didn't get the opportunity in middle school to have the chance to in high school. It's just, it's, it's good stuff. I mean, it's just good stuff, and it's, you know, it's, um, also on steroids, you know, but the New York City, well, Spanish Harlem trip to this one is, I think they're getting a better deal. It was Broadway show, but, yeah.
Anyway, any other questions? All right, Gary, you want, are you gonna be our mover today?
Um, I move that we improve the Nauset Regional High School Spanish trip to Puerto Rico and all the fundraising licenses.
Second?
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the trip to Puerto Rico, raise your hand. It's unanimous, you're on, Anne.
Well, that's good. I figured out why it wasn't working, so I, I. Hello, everybody.
Okay, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good news. All right, um, so now we're gonna go down to the principal's report. Uh, Peter, can we start with you?
Sure, yeah. So, uh, a few things going on, uh, uh, at the middle school. So, um, we really are looking around at, at spaces, so, you know, over the summer, we did the renovation flipping out, most of the conference places with better flooring, but now we're looking at specific classrooms that are, have been, you know, kind of lying dormant, or, or could be, they're, uh, upgraded or repurposed. So we've got a little couple of innovation lab, um, that teachers periodically sign out. Um, but, uh, we recently had a group of, um, elementary teachers in that space to do some professional development. And, uh, Kristen stopped by, and then, uh, she came, uh, to my office and said, you know, I've got this idea. And so if we, uh, this, the two of us then, this sort of got like, like kids at the candy store, like, ooh, what if we do that? Uh, and so we are, uh, making some upgrades in there. It had like old woodshop-style tables in there. Um, and there's a full woodshop next door, so, um, there could be better tables, and we looked in a storage room next door, and we're like, oh, we already have the tables, there's no cost there. Um, so you're gonna have some better seating, because have some better technology, or at least needs to be, like, kind of clean to update it too. Um, but it could be a really nice space for professional development for, for pretty large groups to be able to come. Um, if we have guest speakers, all sorts of things could take place in that room. So we've had a few meetings, we're, we're, you know, in the brainstorming sta- stages, but we are moving forward with some of the, just switching out of the, of the furniture. Uh, and it's got a ton of potential. It could still be used by students periodically during the day, uh, but, but then for like professional development days, it sounds like I could be used for, um, faculty. And then, as I mentioned, right next door, excuse me, is the woodshop, and when the woodshop teacher retired a few years ago, um, so did woodshop. Way away, right? So it's just, then sort of sitting there. So we've, and then as, uh, tends to happen, uh, other things started to get stored there. So like our food services, does food services for, I mean, it's, uh, firebirds. And so all of a sudden, like, the, their stuff started to get stored in there, and other things started to get stored. And so we've done some clearing out of stuff that doesn't really belong in there, so it can be used again. And so, uh, our teachers are starting to, um, explore ways that they can, uh, use that as a space to sign out as well. It wouldn't be like a woodshop program yet, maybe that's, because we use for, maybe we do something else with it, but we're just starting to think about it. But we've already had a couple of groups, like, under the supervision of a teacher, make, uh, some, um, we have picnic tables outside for lunch, but these are like some standing tables, like smaller, like kind of high-top tables. They've made a couple of those, and so we're already starting to, uh, reuse that space, which is nice. We've got another room at the school that a sign outside says Home Eck, which those of us in, in this room, I understand what that means, but our kids don't know what, what that is. Um, and so it really could become a, like a culinary classroom. Um, it's a really nice, uh, culinary teaching space. And our new creative power skills course that, um, has been developed by our library media specialist, Kate Harvey. Um, she's, um, integrating some cooking activities into that course, so that kids can use it. Suzie Remilar, uh, is teaching the Earth Keepers and Changemakers. She does some cooking in there of some Native American dishes, so we're starting to use that space somewhat as well. Next door to that was this little, it's called a cafe, but it's really just a, a room with some tables. Um, and so now we've transformed that into a sensory room for kids that need like a calming space, timeout space, there's all sorts of sensory equipment and things in there. Um, and, uh, we are in the process of setting it up, um, on the small side of our cafeteria, section of the office basement for student lounge. So there, there's now a ping-pong table, a, a air hockey table, some nice seating, um, video games, uh, that we'll approve, of course. Um, but, um, and then we're developing the systems for how do students earn the right to go in there, and what is the supervision like, look like in there? So it's really, uh, uh, exciting to kind of walk around and see these spaces that have just sort of been there, but been unused for a while, now start to come back to life, and we're really, all of these are, are with students in mind, kind of getting some input from students, like, what's, what's missing for your experience here? What could make this better? And so, uh, those things are happening, truly, uh, uh, some great, great stuff happening there. Uh, Samantha mentioned, uh, the composting program, so we've had kind of a, a soft opening with that. At Eddie's school, and Brewster actually, uh, started a, a composting program. Some folks from, um, Brewster Conservation, um, uh, met with us last year, and then then our sixth graders that are now seventh graders, but they were sixth graders, the, at the, the student council said, this is what we'd like to pursue, bringing that kind of program here to the middle school. So, uh, Black Earth Company, they've probably seen like those little green bins that get picked up in neighborhoods, like, we've got big green bins. Um, and, um, we're training the kids on what can be composted, and, um, we've done composting on a small scale for our greenhouse course, and now this is going to be on a, on a larger scale. And even just with this soft opening, we already know, we are already noticing a, uh, reduction in, uh, the waste that we're bringing. So, um, more on that as it gets, uh, more developed. It's all student-run, um, they're even emptying the buckets, and it's great. Um, clubs in general are, are, I linked to the list of clubs that gets updated, updated in real time. Uh, I actually had a couple of sixth graders pop into my office the other day and said, you'd like to start a book club. I said, great, all you need to do is find a, a, a t-shirt, and, uh, we can make that happen. That's kind of how clubs operate. Um, some of them have stipends attached to it for faculty, but, but we kind of hire them first to see if there's, they can stick around. Um, but for kids to come forward and say, we want a book club, like, we're not gonna say no. Yeah, uh, and new this year, uh, are a few different clubs. So, uh, Model UN is expanding to grade six. It's sort of like, uh, almost JV, uh.
Training, training for the rich.
Uh, which is great. Uh, Human Rights Academy, uh, which Driftwood knows a lot about, uh, we're starting a Human Rights Academy Club. Um, and, uh, the Scripps National Spelling Bee, they, um, just kind of bombard us with, um, emails in the summertime. And one of the emails this year kind of, uh, uh, I don't know, popped, popped when I, when I was going through email, and I sent it out and said, if anybody wants to organize this this year, let me know, and a couple of teachers have taken that on, and so students were kind of trained to be contestants in the National Spelling Bee, and so there's, it's a school-based thing, and then if you win, you get to go to a regional thing, and if you win, you get to go to a, the national thing. So there's no guarantee that's, that will be on the national stage, but, yeah. Um, student council, uh, in the past, it's been sixth grade student council, seventh grade student council, eighth grade student council. This year, we're combining the grades, which I really love, because it allows our, our eighth graders to sort of serve in that leadership role and be role models. Uh, so, uh, we're, uh, sort of piloting how to. we're uh strip piloting how to get representatives, like does each Nauset time or home room have a representative, maybe, like where, you know, at this point, it's just voluntary, kids that are interested in joining student council, but we're gonna get it up and running first, and then uh put some additional structures in place, probably an officer tier in place. Um, and they're, they're modeling, uh, we're following the lead of the high school. Spirit Week for us is next week as well. Um, things like Twin Day. Um, and uh, Nauset Colors Day, and I think they're doing a um Students Dressed Like a Teacher, Teachers Dressed Like Students Day. So they, they, you, you've taught uh kids this year in Nauset time how to send email. Email's not something that kids do naturally, it's something we do naturally. And so I got a very nice professional email from one of the student council members saying, these are the themes that we are considering, and we need your approval. Can you, you know, and so uh, they've, they've sought, sought that out. So really good stuff uh happening. And then our school council met last week. Um, Savannah is a, is one of the student representatives on the school council, looking at um uh doing a crosswalk between the handbooks that you approved for the high school and ours to get ours to kind of be really in sync with theirs over the course of this year. And we want to make sure that the school improvement plan stays alive. We created this tracking document that I linked, that you can explore, and it basically have created almost like a green light, red light thermometer system for each of the different focus areas, so we can track the progress over the next three years. Um, and periodically, I'll give you some updates on that. In terms of celebrations, we celebrated Amy Fleischer earlier, which is amazing. She's a fantastic teacher. You all mentioned last meeting, uh, the grant that Suzie Remalar had had received, and we continue to get some additional funding coming in for that Me Too project, so we are closer. Um, the two of them are really doing uh outstanding work. We had our open house since the last time we all met. Uh, I, I think attendance was much better um than last year, which is great. It's kind of like, you know, uh, it's another step uh away from the COVID years, if you will, where it was like, you know, during COVID, it was like, don't come, and now we want people to come, but they're slow, slow to come. So we are seeing uh an uptick in participation, which is fantastic. And we're gonna bring back Arts Day, which the last time that happened was in twenty nineteen. And uh, it was supposed to happen March twentieth, twenty twenty, and it was close, I think, the week before, right? So Arts Day is uh about twenty five local artists will come in, and then we have this very elaborate schedule where the kids get to rotate through and see three of these local artists and these little mini workshops with them. Um, and sort of this idea of bringing in local expertise uh from the, the community. So that'll be in the spring. Um, and we'll provide some more detail in advance uh for that, mention the field trips, and then I shared with you some of the highlights from classrooms. Uh, if you get a chance to look at a couple of those poems, um, they were, they were really quite good. The uh.
You talk to read online, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna try to try to send them to you in a better format. But they're, they're called Just Because poems, and they're, they're quite good. And then we got some nice press about that innovation grant, uh, in the town article. It's always great. Um, so really good stuff.
Off to a good start. Um, any questions?
I took a quick pause. This, having the student government being all the classes together, I guess, great stuff, because this whatever reason, in that age group, there's that differentiation off that, except for, you're six, I mean, whereas anything you can go to break down those walls and provide that leadership and, and, and the examples, it's just good stuff. It'll help the culture of the school.
Yep. You know, uh, Pat, Pat Clark, as, and this, as you all know, it's amazing personality and relationship with kids. And he says to his kids all the time, like, we're warriors, not donkeys, when they're kind of clowning around. And the kids at the high school, and Karen can attest to it, uh, you know, the kids have taken that on, and so the seniors at the high school, you know, when they see the younger kids kind of acting foolish, they're like, oh, we don't, we don't do that here. And so that's kind of what we're trying to set up as a society of like our eighth graders being the ones to tell the kids, like, no, our culture here is not that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah.
And going back to the composting, in the uh program.
You're gonna have to speak up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're back to the composting program. Is there some sort of financial arrangement going on with the company? How does that work?
Yeah, they, they've given us a, a pretty significant uh discount um to be able to uh, want to come and pick up the bins. So, yeah, um, and the kids, uh, the sixth graders just ran with this last year and reached out to, I, I'm gonna have to, I'll come back and report where they got the grant from, but they reached out, applied for a grant, got it. Uh, so all of a sudden, I got a check in the mail last spring for a thousand dollars. I was like, what, what is this from? One of the, one of the kids just on there, oh. That's what I'm saying.
Could we hard?
Yeah.
Yeah, don't you get a grant right out of position?
Long time work.
Um, okay, anything else?
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
Um, so I attended uh the open house, and I thought it was wonderful. It was suit, like, your presentation at the beginning was very informative, and I heard from many different parents in different grades. So thank you for doing that, because I think that was one of the first times I remember we were gathering like that, so it was fantastic. And I also attended virtually like the PTO meeting the other night, and it seemed like it was a great um energized group. A lot of AJ was happy with the attendance. Um, so just really want to thank you for all positive energy that's happening. Um, it was all fantastic.
That is, the power of a PTO done right is unbelievable, I mean, all the trips were paid for, uh, well, for the elementary, I mean, it's just, it's not, isn't that, but it's part of the community. It's, it's just good stuff.
Uh, yeah, and I just want to note too, I think it's great that you're doing stuff with unused spaces, because unused spaces can just become tacky and create all other kinds of problems. And so you use the space you can. So I think that's, that's fantastic. Oh.
Know the tag along with that, is also using that space without any budget effect. Awesome.
Yeah. All I can say is, if you need extra wood, there are chairs in the library. Those who want chairs, ever, ever.
You wonder why the kids don't read. Those chairs.
Uh, okay, that's great. Okay. Thanks for that report. Always good. It's, and now we'll move on to the high school. Uh, Pat Clark can't be with us tonight, so Karen, you are here, and you're joined by Fiona.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for having us join you. Um, Arlen, would you be able to share our slides?
And could you introduce Fiona for us?
I surely I will, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Arlen. So, um, I'd like to just get started by talking a little bit about, Arlen, can you move on to the, the next, that's next slide? Thank you. Um, Principal Clark has begun to host a monthly podcast entitled Principally Speaking, which is included in his Friday Bulletin to Parents, Students, Faculty, and Staff. So each month, he will be hosting a new guest, and the topic will align with his principal's report to the school committee. So I was honored to be the first guest on the podcast, and the topic was high-quality instruction. So if you've already listened to the podcast, some of what I'm going to be sharing uh will be repetitive. So, Arlen, would you go to the next slide? Then the next slide, please. Thank you. So I'm gonna just start by defining high-quality instruction and highlight a couple of examples. So high-quality instruction promotes learning through clear, engaging, and responsive teaching, and is aligned with research-based practices and educational standards. It is well-organized, again, standards-driven lessons with relevant content and proven strategies that enhance understanding. And finally, high-quality instruction actively engages students, it adapts to their diverse needs, and provides timely feedback to ensure that all students can meet and exceed the standards. So what does this look like in the classroom? Arlen, would you go to the next slide, please? So teachers intentionally plan lessons using a model called backwards design, which was introduced by Grant Wiggins in nineteen ninety eight. And the reason that it's called backwards design is teachers start with intended outcomes and objectives, what they want students to know, understand, and be able to do. And these objectives, again, align to state standards. Then teachers plan assessments, is the second stage. And that is, how will I know when students have mastered the objectives? And then the last stage is when they actually create the activities that introduce students to the objectives, give them opportunities to practice it, the skills, and eventually master them. So years ago, when we planned lessons, teachers would start by planning the activity, and then the outcomes were really not intentional as, as much as they are today because of this model that Grant Wiggins introduced, where we, we really focused in on the intent, which was what is the objective of what we're trying to do here. Um, key to this work is giving students pointed feedback along the way. So we talk about formative assessment and summative assessment. So formative assessment is all of the feedback we are giving students as they're practicing skills, so that they are improving along the way, which ends in, in, in the summative assessment at the end, that they can show that they've now mastered either the content or the skills in some way. So when we talk about high-quality instruction, teachers start by making sure that the students know and understand what the objective or the outcome we're trying for is all about. Um, and making sure that the students can explain it and why it's relevant and why it's important. And that really helps with getting students to buy into what they're doing. Um, so a lot of times we hear teachers talking about that writing their objectives and writing them in student-friendly language, because our state standards are very meaty, and so sometimes need to be broken down and reworded. Um, the teachers provide activities that introduce material to students. They provide opportunities for students to practice the skills, the content. Um, and then again, key is feeding, giving the feedback along the way so that students can grow. Um, so when seeing high-quality instruction, we'll see students actively engaged in the learning. Um, and again, this is all done intentional. It is not accidental. Um, often there are choices along the way, so students with different learning styles, all these styles are considered. Um, which, again, not only is it helpful in engaging students, but it's also helpful in meeting the different styles. Some students like to collaborate, some like to work on their own, some, you know, they have projects, some prefer, you know, to again, engage and work with a, a peer or a group of peers. Um, so the photos that you're looking at currently are um from our arts medals course, and uh Jody Craven teaches, and the Vex Robotics course, which Lisa Orlandella and Jess Mullin teach. Um, so just to give you some examples, when I asked the student on the left in the arts medal class, what are you doing? She talked all about the technique she was using. She described the tool to me. She knew the, the name of the tool. Um, she was using and told me why she was doing what she was doing um with the tool, why that was an important step in her process. Um, so again, the students being knowledgeable about their objectives is, is a big piece of high-quality instruction. Um, the work that the students are doing in this class currently, they're designing and creating um different uh arts medals jewelry, which is being donated to Wild Care, which is a place where animals who get hurt in the wild are rehabilitated. Um, they'll be sold, and the funds are used to support the program. So this is a really important community partnership. And the activity, again, is wildly engaging for our students as they work doing a really authentic task, and they are contributing to saving animals. So again, you have that real buy-in by the students. Um, and the partnership from the community, which it's just amazing. So the second photo that you see is a group of students working collaboratively, and they are building and programming robots that they will use as they complete and compete in obstacle course. The students uh have a challenge. Uh, they work to problem-solve as they test the capabilities of the robot they're working on. They have parameters they must stay within when they're building, and they are knowledgeable about the task they are completing. And it's an iterative process, so the feedback is not only coming from the teacher, but also from the students' trials. Um, again, an example of high-quality instruction, and it's an engaging activities as students work to build skills and to learn the content. So these are just a couple of the many activities and lessons that our teachers plan, where you see our students fully and effectively engaged in the learning process. So not only uh are they engaged, but they truly care about what they're doing. Um, our dedicated teachers work hard to plan these lessons in order to provide high-quality instruction and to meet the needs of all of our learners. And tonight, I am pleased that um Senior Fiona McCray has agreed to join us, and she's going to share some examples of high-quality instruction from a student perspective. So, Arlen, if you could go to the next slide. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Fiona McCray. I live in Orleans, and I've gone to Nauset schools my whole life, and I really, really love our school system. So, yeah, I just wanted to talk a bit about um this high-quality instruction from a student's point of view. And I'm really glad Mrs. McGrath said the um backwards design, use that word, because I'm gonna talk a bit about that, but I didn't have like a vocabulary word for it, so I'm glad to have learned that. Um, for example, to start off, uh, my psychology teacher, at the beginning of every lecture, we ha, she has this thing where it's just this slide titled What You Will Know by the End of the Day. And it's all these new uh concepts and ideas, maybe parts of the brain is what we're doing right now. So it's really cool to and helpful to know what I should know by the end of the day. And if I'm struggling with something that's on that list, I know what she's expecting me to learn, and if I'm struggling with something, I can tell her, and we can organize an extra help session, which is something I think uh teachers, having extra help sessions is very beneficial to the students. Also, offering study guides, uh, extra resources outside of uh school things, test corrections. All these things allow students to deepen their understanding uh for a subject. And with things like test corrections, it allows um students to make mistakes, but also learn from them. So uh, if I, if I'm struggling, say, on a test for the Civil War, for my US history class that I took last year, I can go in with my teacher, and she can help me one-on-one, improve my grade, and improve my understanding of the subject. Um, and I think a lot of these classes that I've experienced are very conversational, the ones that I've most benefited from. Uh, like, in the bottom right here is Mr. Clark, who taught me art history, AP art history, my sophomore year. Uh, he has a teaching style where, to me, it felt like I was in college when I was in, when I was sixteen. It felt like I was being held to a standard I'd never been held to before. It was my first AP class, which is a college-level course, but the way he taught it felt like a seminar. Um, it was kind of as though we were all teaching each other in a way, because we, the ideas were just kind of, you know, bouncing off every student. We were all having this big conversation about art. Um, and he would teach it not uh only chronologically, like, um, you know, uh, the pyramids to like modern art, he would teach it like in ideas, which I think is really helpful. And you can do in a lot of different courses, like he would do, um, you know, uh, beauty in art and idealism in art. And you can do uh similar, you know, conceptual ideas in different um branches of subjects as well. And uh, I think having routines in classes really helps students to comprehend what they're learning about. Like I was saying, themes and concepts are well-understood. We have a routine of how we learn. A lot of my classes will start out with talking about what we're gonna be learning today, what our goals should be, and then we'll get into activities or maybe small groups. Um, and like Ms. McGrath was talking about, there's so many different learning styles uh for kids. And in every class that I've had, we've had so many opportunities to explore these styles and find out what is best for us, whether that's a small group project, solo work, um, I've even done class projects before where we all have different jobs, uh, little parts of a big group activity. Um, and even community service opportunities like that as well. But we also have variety in our classes. Within our routine, maybe once a day, we'll try something new, uh, experiment, see um what might work for us that we're not used to. Um, and in my classes, I felt very engaged. Student, uh, teachers are often, sometimes like keeping us on our toes, well, like, uh, calling on random. Student, uh, teachers are often sometimes like keeping us on our toes, well, like uh, calling on random students to check in on uh, um, comprehension uh, and help students along the way. And I, something I really like to have is student teaching, where I've had it in a lot of my humanities classes, like history and English, where um, I will maybe I'll teach chapter 18 of Jane Eyre or I'll teach my uh, classmates about a specific uh, conflict in uh, the westward expansion of the United States. And that will give me an opportunity to have a really in-depth um, understanding of that specific topic, but it also gives me a chance to share it. And so we're each learning from each other, not just the teacher. And so the teacher's given us that really cool opportunity. And to kind of finish up, I want to talk about the level of care that I've received from teachers at NOSIT. When a student knows that a teacher cares about them, not just as like, you know, your test grade, but as you as a person, the student tries harder in the class, they want to be engaged, they want to improve. Because teachers are one of, if not the most important role model in a student's life, outside of their family, of course. Um, but having a teacher who, you know, is like, asks about how your football game went, uh, wants to come see your school musical, it just, it, I don't know, it brightens my day when I, you know, I finish a play and I see that my history teacher has come to see it, or my French teacher has come to see it. And uh, these things just encourage you, you want to impress your role model. You want to learn more. Um, you want to make them proud. And I've had so many teachers that are so passionate about their, about their subject and teaching. And uh, these are just, I, all of my teachers have been excellent, but these are just three examples. Um, on the bottom left is Sally Lum, my uh, freshman year English teacher. She's very kind, but she pushes you with your workload. I, I remember thinking um, my freshman year, like I have never had this much homework before. And it was a lot, but everyone in the class got through it and we all did well in the class. And it kind of, you know, by pushing you a little extra, it gets you, you know, middle school is great, but it's like, okay, now I'm in high school, I'm, I'm gonna become an adult soon. This is what the real world is gonna be like, this is what college will be like. And it kind of got you used to the rigor of these higher level classes. Um, but she's so uh, kind and very funny. Uh, she, we would do a lot of really fun activities in that class and she'd also uh, encourage us to be artistic with our projects. She's a very fun teacher. Um, in the middle, I have Mrs. Torenzi, my math teacher from last year. Math has always been something I very much struggled with. But um, she really helped me understand and I also got to know her by being a member of my class senate. Um, and I wanted to talk about how last year I took honors level pre-calculus, but she let us know that even though we were honor students, we could sign up for the AP test. And when that time of the year came, only me and one other boy in my class of juniors and seniors had signed up for that test. And she gave us so many resources to help us study, even though we weren't in an AP class. She gave us different AP videos, AP um, assessments to work with, just things that were really helpful, like she went above and beyond, she gave us class time to work on these. Um, I think she gave us a week worth of classes, I think over a week's worth of classes to just kind of work in the corner and work on studying for that exam. And I really appreciated that. Um, and I already talked about uh, Mr. Clark earlier, but um, both him, uh, Andrew Clark, my history teacher and Principal Clark, both really care about their students. Um, my history teacher has always uh, every class, he'll shake every student's hand, ask them how they're doing. He'll, he'll like yell across campus like, "Hi Fiona," just, it, it's, it's so fun. Um, he really cares, big smiles, he creates a really deep connection with students. And I don't know, to me that's important, just really showing passion, encouraging students to be uh, rigorous learners and showing that the students really care. And those were the things I just wanted to talk about today. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiona.
Oh, thank you. This is the most we've heard about the high school. And I don't want to say the horse's mouth, but um, the student's mouth, that's even better, yeah. Um, so anybody have any comments?
Couple wonderful comments to Fiona. Sorry about Karen, Karen, thank you for hearing. Fiona, you talked about teaching, you know, teaching others and you really were so in-depth about helping us understand um, the concepts about what it's like to learn at NOSIT High School. And you went into such a variety of different teaching techniques. Um, and you talked about that, that um, that you appreciated that in all of your uh, and all of the teachers that you've had, because as you know, all kids learn very differently. And it sounds like all of those students are very well respected in their learning styles and have an opportunity to have the ability to understand what's being shared. And the other piece that I want, the takeaway that I have from this too, is when you talk about backward design, I'm glad you finally have a word for it, because honestly, it's something we use as adults. And it's, I think, a really good skill to have when we're doing like any planning at all, whether it's something in your home, something in a committee meeting, um, to understand what we're working towards, so that we can get there in a better way. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I forgot to mention this. Um, but it's teachers like these and all the teachers that I've had at NOSIT that have um, made me want to explore education and made me want to pursue that in college. And it's not something I, I've shared that much about, but it's something, just having teachers that show they really care about me and they're uh, willing to push me, have made me want to explore um, my academic passions like history, um, but from an educational view, like I like to become a teacher because of these teachers.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
Wow, I think we need education, so don't give up. Keep that, keep that on.
Come on back to NOSIT.
Yeah.
Quick question Fiona, uh, the longer class times, does that help? Because you talk about this learning process, and I know one of the things we have at the high school is the longer, you know, the four, uh, longer periods a day, does that help in his learning, do you think?
I think definitely, um, because it, instead of having, you know, if we only had an hour-long class or I know some schools have 45-minute classes, we'd have to do a lesson uh, in two separate days, which I think would, you know, kids might forget over the weekend what they had started learning about. Um, and I really prefer it and I don't think, I, I never lose focus over that uh, hour and 20, 20 minutes. Um, I think it's, it helps more to have longer classes.
Thank you.
And the last thing, and the last thing that I will just say is to do all of this work, we are using a tool called Atlas, it's our curriculum mapping software. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. I know that Kristen has started us uh, with a PD pathway, where some of us are going to learn more in-depth about the analytics of the mapping tool and how that will help. But just to kind of put it in context, that, that model that I was talking about, that is the template that we have in Atlas that we're using when teachers are doing their lesson planning work.
Uh, just one question Karen, so you talked about backward design and I think I read, it wasn't anything in this packet, it was in something else, about the professional development that had to go on. So have, what kind of professional development has been provided to how many of the teachers?
So this, we're, we, we're now starting a pathway just now. The teachers are, have been using this model for a while, the backwards design model, but we're starting a pathway um, to actually dig deeper into the software. This is a very powerful tool. Um, there's a lot of analytics that it has, so that you can really look at where are we across the district, meeting state standards and in what areas? And are we missing anything or are we duplicating efforts too many times? That we need to kind of figure out where things go. So that work is just starting this year. Um, a lot of people have uh, signed up for this pathway and eventually will probably lead the charge in the different schools. Uh, the initial group that's, that's gonna be trained, starting November 5th.
So are all the teachers using backward design in all of their classes, across the board?
They're using it for their lesson planning, yes, we have a template and all the departments have it and it's, it's actually in the software, we had them upload it to customize it to the backward design template that includes the profile of a graduate is one of the, what the second stage I, I talked about, the assessment. So how, what are we, what are we looking to um, for the outcomes to be in the first stage and then the second stage of how are we assessing it? Which profile of the graduate skills are we assessing? So we, we have the template that came originally from Grant Wiggins and we sort of customized it in Atlas for, for NOSIT.
And maybe I could just jump in, because I think those two pieces that you're bringing up that haven't been introduced to the group yet, which is the, the professional development pathways, which I'll talk about in a few minutes.
Okay.
And then the other one is just to talk about um, how the data informs what you're talking about, how we use that to feed into that curriculum cycle. Yeah. Okay, so.
We'll get there.
You're piggybacking, okay, all right, all right.
Me, I just ahead.
No, 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 no. No, it's, it's good to have you together, I think. Yeah, yeah. But, um, okay, anything else?
Uh, Josh?
Just quickly Fiona, go outside and look north, there's crazy northern lights tonight. Get, get out of your room for a couple minutes, go check them out.
Thank you for telling me, I'll go check those out.
Thank you Fiona.
Thank you for having me.
We need to get out of here. This is, this is. This is a real picture?
No, this is a map of where they are, they're down here, okay.
That's, that's a real photo of West Brewster right now.
Are you kidding?
Random backyard in West Brewster.
Well, let's finish up, okay.
All right.
Gonna cancel my tickets. North just north.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much Karen and Fiona, you're welcome, anytime, come back, tell us more.
Thank you, good stuff, excellent.
Okay. Um, all right Kristen.
Are we on?
Can follow up? No. Fiona is a hard act to follow. Arlen, can you bring up those slides? This is gonna be so super fast.
Okay.
We're gonna go in. Yeah, exactly, yeah. Um, so I want to thank you for having me here and basically you've heard a little bit about the, from Karen, you've heard about the pedagogy, uh, from Fiona, you've heard about the engagement. I'm sort of opening up the curtains behind and saying, okay, what are the results from all of this? So you had a very strong strategic plan in place, uh, which I am so happy about, because it sort of gave me a roadmap as I was coming in and putting into place and strengthening a lot of what was already here. Um, and so we're getting really good results from it. So uh, I want to tell you a little bit about that. Next slide, Arlen. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about um, the welcome, the start of the school year, the assessments that we give to know where each kid is. It's a very personalized education. Um, the data that we take from that to inform instruction, how that data folds into our teaching practices, which is where Karen and I were talking. Uh, then a little bit of data on the MCAS, um, uh, both at the middle school and the uh, high school. And then the professional development path, which is a new, new piece. Uh, and then great things to come. It's through this, I tried to use lots and lots of pictures, because as we know, they're worth a thousand words. So next slide, Arlen. So I wanted to first say thank you, everyone has been so, so welcoming. The students, the teachers, my administrative team that I'm working with, it's a rock star team, they're fantastic. Um, but there's Peter in his office making miracles happen. Uh, and so uh, I wanted to just say thank you. And the next slide. So one of my first big tasks was to welcome all of our new educators. And I'm not sure how much you've talked about this, but it's actually pretty hard to get high quality instructors at this part of the cake. Uh, so with this year, we were joined by 41 new educators. So we wanted to make their orientation in August really fun and exciting. So it was a NOSIT scavenger hunt. Um, and so they had a packet that they were filling out with, how do you do this? You know, who do you go to with this kind of question, what's the style of pedagogy and so forth? Um, but also fun. And when they all filled it out and had bonded as a group over the two days, um, they turned it in and received a NOSIT swag bag, very, very, very popular. So I had written to the uh, area businesses and just asked for like, what can you give us to go in a NOSIT swag bag? So you can see the little backpacks. So we got, you know, Kip Cod, uh, Five Bank gave us like straws balls and water bottles and beach towels and we got just so many organizations. So we all, they gave like coffee, like it was wonderful. So they were very, very excited and feel very welcomed. You can see they're like, smiles, like, next slide please. And then we started school, so um, right after Labor Day, you can see pictures from I think every school there. Um, and it just was like a well-oiled machine, pretty much on the first day. So I, this is my fourth school district I've worked in, in 35 years. Um, and I have to say it was the smoothest start to a school year I've seen anywhere. And I've worked in Wayland, Brookline and Concord, and now NOSIT. So this was awesome, um, lots of good instruction, getting to know kids as people right from the first day. So really great, next slide please. So behind the scenes, this is, these are all the assessments that we give to students. They don't take very long, but we get a picture pretty much within the first like three weeks of where every kid is academically and then socio-emotionally. So uh, in the lowest grades, K to 2, we give the dibbles, which we are now legally required to give to make sure uh, that those students have dyslexia. And if they do, we pick it up early and we remediate very early.
State legally, who, what, who was required just after?
Mathletes.
Math.
Yep, we have to screen all kindergarten through second graders. Yeah. Uh, so then you know, I think that we give eye ready in reading and math and we do it as a continuum, so kindergarten through grade 10. So we can really look at uh, the growth for students over time. And we're actually pretty lucky uh, in NOSIT, that we have a pretty stable student population. Um, that was not true, for example, when I was in Brookline. So you can really track a kid's growth through the years with this program. Um, to measure their social emotional skills, uh, we give either the DESA or a Panorama. Um, and then we have ways of remediating uh, from that if students need extra help in certain skills. Um, ACCESS is the um, statewide test that we give to all English language learners uh, and we get results from that. And then of course, the one that everybody knows about is MCAS, we give it in the spring and then we get the results, raw results over the summer. So I had a lot of fun with those, because I think you know I'm a mathematician, but statistician really. Uh, so I love that. Um, and then um, we get the formal results in there, like in the newspaper and everything in the fall. Um, and then uh, I think tomorrow, we'll send out the hard copies to all parents of how your individual kids did. But what I'm gonna report on here is uh, how we did as groups. So next slide please. So we take all of that data for each individual kid, does that make sense? So we have like tons of data, we have also their attendance data, we have uh, behavioral data. And so we have teams at every grade level at every school that are getting together with all the data crunched down um, so that they can make plans for individual students. So we do a big look at all the students, um, who needs to be pushed more in what areas? And then we really hone in one of the kids who are below benchmarks. So they're the struggling students in reading, math and uh, socio-emotional skills. So, and then teams of teachers, you can see here, high school, uh, different elementary schools, um, they really use a protocol um, to dive into the um, data and really ask questions and then look back at the data for answers instead of sort of. and then look back at the data for answers instead of sort of jumping to conclusions. Um, so this is probably, this is the secret sauce. Over the next couple of years, hopefully, I'll be coming here and saying, we did better, we did better, we did better. And it's because of this. Giving each kid what they need at the time that they need it in small group instruction. So we call it NOSIT system of support. Um, so there's intervention times, there's interventionists at, at every school, as you know. So this is the secret sauce. Next thing?
Yeah, my question, that's all right. So um, I love that for the support, but also looking at the other um, side of the spectrum for like.
Right, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Kids who are, yeah, so I can sometime come and show you, we're using a new tool. Actually, the middle school is really very, very far ahead on using it, um, called PANorama. And it sort of groups ki- kids by skills. Um, you know, red, yellow, green, blue. And so you can see, a teacher can quickly see, oh, these kids are up here, they're gonna be, need to be pushed.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Um, so just in terms of some of our data from last year, I'm really happy to report uh, that on our access. So, so those are our English language learners. We are alone incidence school district, meaning we have fewer than a hundred students. Um, for across like K to twelve, we have fewer than a hundred students. Um, but our ELL teachers set a goal of eighty, I mean, sorry, sixty-five percent of students would meet their improvement targets, which is enormous. That means usually that they've made more than a year of growth in a school year. So that's, they met their target. So that was an incredible um, uh, an incredible target. And then they met it. So we're really lucky. The teachers that we have are really good. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, just a quick question.
Yeah.
I thought we were over a hundred at one point and we have as a, add a program as a result. Is that not correct? It was a couple of years. Uh, I thought that there was some.
We might have had, you know, it's um, there's certain requirements by the state.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so you have to have.
You went in a hundred number, you gotta add something. You just, I, that's what I thought was going on with something.
Yeah, yeah. And it's legally, I mean, civil rights legally, we have to provide um, two hours of instruction a day to students who are class level one or level two. So at the middle school and the high school, that's really, really hard because you can have one kid. And all of a sudden, you have to have a, a teacher for that kid.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So um, staffing wise, it's very complicated.
I was about to create a multi-language parent advisory uh, group. Yeah, yeah. So that's some nice stuff.
I get the emails all the time.
Yeah, yeah, they're very, they're very good. Yeah, wonderful. Uh, yeah, probably the strongest of any school district that I've worked in. That group, it's really.
Hear stuff like that, to be honest. It's tough to get.
They've really come together within the last three, four years. I mean, they're just much, much more active. Yeah, the parents, the teachers are great. Um, so yeah, so I'm just gonna, now I have like ten slides for MCAS. I can go, shh, but stop me if you want. Um, so um, in general, the good story um, is that in grades three through eight, so including the middle school for uh, you guys, uh, this is how the state reports it, uh, is um, we were at or above, slightly above the state averages. So that's exactly where you wanna be right now. So that's really good. Next slide. So I'm just breaking it down now by um, subject area. So in English Language Arts, you know, we give that yearly in grades three through eight. So the important is right down at the bottom. So students who are in the blue are students who are exceeding, the percentage exceeding the expectation or the benchmark um, and meeting is in the green. So for English Language Arts, grades three through eight, we uh, on the left is NOSIT. So we have forty-six percent of our students. Um, and this is the state thirty-nine percent on the right. Does that make sense? They're all formatted this way. Okay. So the next one is math. Great. So you can see, uh, this is actually Adam O'Shea's little son. That's so cute. I didn't even realize that he's one of our principals. And I happened to take a picture of his uh, child. So anyway, um, very close to the state. I would say we have some work to do um, at the middle school in terms of math. And I just met today with the math department and we are doing a curriculum review. So we're gonna be in the process over the next year of adopting uh, a new curriculum for our middle school now. So, yeah.
So these state um, grades, this is from the same year. So you're comparing it from apples to apples.
Yeah. Yeah, and so uh, the big news in the state level is that overall, we're still experiencing pandemic loss. So we're, you know, these numbers in twenty nineteen were much higher. So you know, these kids mostly, like the third graders were on pre-K in twenty twenty and uh, eighth graders in like fourth grade. So the.
Who got the bulk of lack of learning.
Yes, yes, they really got hit hard. So the younger kids in that age group struggle more in reading and the middle level kids struggled more in math. So that's, that's why these numbers look like they do. Overall, in the state, I'm talking about not NOSIT. Next slide, please. And then in grades five and eight, we give the MCAS in science and, and tech engineering. And um, this is overall a really good area for us. And right here, it's a state level, but those are just two grades. But you'll see when I go to a high school that uh, it's overall a super strong area for us.
To the school that is? I'm just asking you say.
Um, that is Orleans.
I think my son's in that class.
They were doing the coolest project with the apples.
She is, she is a wonderful teacher.
Yes, yes. I could, her classroom is like right when I walked in the door.
Yeah.
And so I spent so much time there. I gotta get, yeah, yeah, I gotta get more in. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a great class. Uh, yeah. So the next slide, please. Okay, so specifically from the middle, so I just asked Peter to say a little bit of what they noticed.
Yeah, sure. So you know, it, it's interesting because the state has said post-COVID, like, we think this is gonna be the, the baseline year and because, but they didn't know like, where's the, where's the impact COVID? How long is that gonna last? And so it's, it's almost like every year is new baseline for us. You know, it's combination of the pandemic, you know, and turnover, the principal's office, and all sorts of factors. We're kind of looking at this last spring as, as the, the new baseline for us, because now we wanna kind of, you know, track forward. And so I just sort of picked out some of the things that are trending in the right direction because overall, that is what's happening. Our, our results are not nearly where we want them to be. And they are um, trending in the, in the right direction. So you can see uh, strengths particularly in the sixth grade, uh, the sixth grade class, um, which I think speaks to both not only the work that our sixth grade team did, but the work that's happening in the elementaries to help kids uh, um, recover some of that lost learning in, during the pandemic, where that group of students in math meeting or exceeding expectations went up pretty significantly, um, as comparing sixth graders from the year before to sixth graders this year. So it's not exactly opposite, it's two different cohorts of students, but it's, it's how our sixth graders were performing in that year. Um, in ELA, um, with a dramatic increase in that exceeding category. So in those bar graphs that Kristen shared, you really want that red category to be, you know, as small as possible. And you want green and blue to go up. And it'd be great if we can get that, that blue category in particular up, um, which you'll see in all the state averages, the blue category is relatively small. So that jump from nine percent to twenty-two percent exceeding in sixth grade ELA um, is a good kind of indicator of, of um, what's happening. And so then in seventh grade, um, again, that reducing that red, um, that red bar in the graph um, is starting to happen as well. A slight uptick in the eighth grade science, children's students meeting and exceeding expectations. Uh, same with uh, if you look at math across, which is green, six, seven, eight, a slight uptick. Um, and you're still, you're still, still seeing that in terms of meeting and exceeding expectations. We're not above that fifty percent mark. We wanna get uh, certainly above that. That's where we're trending. But this is the last point that I'm uh, i- is the indicator that I'm sort of most excited about because the way they uh, calculate accountability, as they look at uh, two years, so, so twenty twenty-three, there's all these targets that you have to hit and there's, there's different weights for these different targets. And then twenty twenty-four, they weight uh, the twenty twenty-three as forty percent of your accountability score and twenty twenty-four as sixty percent of your accountability score. It's, and so we jumped uh, from the uh, uh, previous um, accountability targets, math, only twenty-seven percent in twenty twenty-three to sixty-seven percent in twenty twenty-four. That's, that's significant because next year, if we can even, even if we just hold flat, even if we, we don't make another jump next year, that twenty-seven goes away. The sixty-seven is counted as forty percent. And however we do in twenty twenty-five will be the sixty percent. So uh, these are really good kind of early morning signs of us trending in the, in the right direction. Uh, so uh, and we know like last year, Orleans Elementary did really well. Um, and uh, and so those kids are coming to us. Like, that's gonna help us. Like, so there's lots of good things happening. And there's still a lot of work to do. And so it's really useful for us to start rolling up our sleeves a little bit, looking deeper into the data uh, and doing some curriculum that now uh, Kristen is, is leading um, to set us up for future success. So uh, we're not where we wanna be yet. And there's some good uh, indicators that we're, we're on the uptick.
Uh, next slide, please. So we're transitioning to the high school. Um, that's just a great picture. The kids are so happy in that building. If you've walked around at all uh, in the new, in the new building. Uh, next slide.
It's so pretty to see that nice.
Um, so uh, I said, you, you know, the beauty is really at the high school when you really see the fruits of your labor. And um, the high school kids suffered overall in the state less than the younger kids suffered because their skills are more sophisticated, you know, their learning. Um, so uh, in English Language Arts, uh, NOSIT was at sixty-four percent and uh, the state was at fifty-seven. And the next slide, please. So math, fifty-four percent and NOSIT forty-eight percent for the state. And then science. Is the next slide, please? Uh, and so we're right at the state level. So that's pretty good considering uh, how much specific science is on that test. We're, that's pretty good.
The red bars are valuable, Kendra. It's the second. On all three of those slides, our red is really small uh, compared to the state. But that, that's great.
Yeah. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so this is really where you start to see how strong we are um, as a high school. Uh, these are the AP tests. And I, I think you heard the districts I listed before, super high performing districts I'm coming from. I have never seen two hundred and fifty-six students taking AP tests at a school of any size. So just the fact that we have all the classes for students who want to be able to take that, and then so many students are taking those AP tests is really in, you know, in multiple subjects. So that's, that's really why I have, you know, that, that over two hundred number is pretty outstanding. Yeah.
And you got an award.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's great. Uh, next slide, please. And then I just wanted you a sense of all the subject areas that students can take AP tests in. Um, because it's not just English and math. You know, we have all the history, social sciences, art history. Um, and all of our students do um, participate in that. And then I just want to point out the science is, is also very strong. So that is the data. Uh, next slide, please.
Okay, we back up another one for once that I've told that. I didn't realize that what we were looking at was test scores. That is, I mean, the nice part about this is that these are national. I mean, we have, I, I will, my kids took a bunch of AP courses and you always like, you know, how are these, are we, are we any good?
Yeah.
And when you, they, you get your numbers, the numbers aren't local, the numbers are national. So if you're, you know, hitting a five or a four, it's on a national scale. You know, I mean, it just, this is a test, you know, this is a report with how well we do across the nation.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's just, it's pretty good, good stuff. It's objective and unbiased.
Yeah. And, and just so I could mention, the, the award that NOSIT High School won was the AP School Honor Wall uh, for twenty twenty-four. And when it talked, just really quickly, it says, congratulations, NOSIT High School has been named for the twenty twenty-four AP School Honor Wall as a gold member. And was also recognized, business is important, that has access award for providing all students with the opportunity to participate in AP in, including treatments of underrepresented populations. And I think that's what, that's what meets my heart.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah, just touching on the base here.
No.
I've paid, you know, that was a lot of money, the AP over the years. No, no, I'm just saying.
The access.
It's a business, it's a business.
Well, but it also helps kids.
Yeah, so I, just to point out um, one thing, um, I think um, our student representative came in and said it so well. Um, but as I tour classes, my goal is to tour classes at the high school and the middle school every week. Um, and as I tour classes, the most interesting thing to me as a thirty-five-year educator is I can't tell the difference when I'm going into an AP English class and when I'm going into a regular college level class. Because the students are talking, they're talking to each other, they're engaged, they have um, opinions. You know, their teacher are giving them feedback. The classes are not enormous at the AP level, which I'm used to, like thirty, thirty-five kids, not unusual um, in other districts. So you, you can't even tell by the size of the class, like it's, it's really, really good. So that's great. So uh, next slide, please.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all know it's great. So you can see um, how we're doing. So APs are scored on from one being the lowest to five. And you pass, meaning you would get out of a, a college course if you get a three to a five. So this is the percentage of students over the years that have received those scores. So AP made everybody really mad because they didn't change their standards during the um, pandemic. So you can kind of see that. So uh, next slide, please. So for me, just as Peter said, overall for our district, and I'm just gonna remind everybody, we are a Title One district. That means that to be over the uh, state averages is awesome. That is, that's wonderful. Uh, because usually that's not the case. If you qualify as a, as a Title One district for all your kids instead, like, uh, you have to have over forty percent, which we do. So we have forty-four percent right now of students who would qualify for free and reduce lunch, even though now all lunch is free. So that means, you know, we love the poverty level. So that's why some of these numbers are really incredible. Um, but anyway, our accountability level that takes into account all those MCAS scores, but also attendance, graduation rates, and so forth, improve from thirty-seven to forty-four percent. So that's really uh, excellent. Next slide, please. All right. And then uh, the last penultimate thing that I'll talk about is just uh, Karen mentioned before, which is professional development paths for educators. So uh, high-quality professional development for the educators like Karen described on the curriculum backward design um, is part of your strategic plan. And from five years ago, so we took a really, I have a committee, we took a really, really careful look at the impact, um, I'm sorry, implementation guide from the strategic plan. And we said, okay, what was professional development defined as? And um, the big thing was um, choice that teachers are in different places in their careers. Some people have lots of experience, some people are just starting out, some people teach um, language, some people teach math, you know, some people teach something experiential. So um, everybody doesn't need the same thing at the same time. So the big improvement that we just set up, professional development paths. So you can see a list there um, of all the ones that we're doing. So we'll meet three times this year as a pre-K to twelve, NOSIT public schools faculty. So that's about five hundred people, um, educators, administrators, paraeducators. And everybody gets to pick, where do you wanna be um, for those, those three sessions? And so some of them are book studies. Um, The Anxious Generation is a big book right now about the effect of technology, cell phones and so forth on international health. Um, so some people are gonna be doing um, a book read with that. The author of the book is coming one of the times. Um, so uh, lots of different uh, topics. Student engagement is another one there. They'll be doing a book study of engagement by design. That's Fifty Strategies for Making Classes More Engaging and so forth. Um, so we're really excited. The first one is November fifth. Uh, and so I, and they'll go throughout the year.
Quick question. If committee or whatever that works on the professional development, who's on it?
So there's representatives for every school. I would say most of the administrators are on it as well.
Um, with teacher.
Oh, yeah, teachers. And then on purpose, I reached out to the union leaders and just said, you know, look, come into the conversation from the beginning. Um and so.
Ossia in the contract, this was, this came up in discussion and it was part of the contract, but there had been some grain as if it had occurred, if it was occurring in the past. So I just, we go, at the body, we have always talked about how important having professional development that works. You know, that, you know, instead you'll uh it's moving education forward. And so we, every time we touch base on, we kind of get these, you know, where's the money go, blah. So it's just, it's it's quite good to hear that the tools in place are in place and that it's working.
Yes, yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, the other piece that that committee really honed in on is that professional development activities need to be tied to student engagement and results. So you have to be able to draw that line. Um so Karen mentioned, I thought she did a great job. No, no, don't need to talk about the depth of that. So and then the last slide is really just saying, um if you can go to the next slide, Arlen, there's lots of great things to come. So um and I'm happy to talk about any of them, but just because I know it's part of your strategic plan. I went into this uh in the lower right, the girl um holding up a big project. Um this was uh the ninth grader um English class comparing and contrasting the Epic of Gilgamesh, if you remember back to yours, to the um Genesis story from the Bible. And I got, I like, have I just landed in like a philosophy class? Like our first, it was.
It's not a grade.
I it was incredible. I was blown away and they were all, you know, debating the steps and so I just was so excited. Um so lots of great things to come. Yes.
We got a quick question um for both the action. Um so we know what's on the ballot this year is MCAS. What are your thoughts? I mean, I I I.
I thought that that's a political subject and I'm not gonna say my personal opinion.
Well, it's more just though, it was Alex would as a tool, I mean, it's a tool for feedback assessment in education. Are there other tools that you have that you feel are going to provide you with the correct game?
We have lots of lots of um assignments internally. Yeah, that we choose to use, but we're not required to use any of them by the state. The only thing that we do, the MCAS and uh access are at the yellow, that's required. Uh dyslexia, I said in the beginning, yeah. It is.
And do you believe that if MCAS gets voted down, that there'll be a replacement?
So are we gonna talk about this?
It's on the resolution. I'm I'm asking the educator, okay, so I'm I'm asking. And the educators aren't answering. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put you on this.
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
You find base at this point, uh what the 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 ballot question discusses not getting rid of the MCAS altogether. It's rather than just not having it as a graduation.
Alright.
And then the resolution uh for um talks about developing an additional way. But I mean, um let's let's not make self um uh tracking progress and having having a graduation. That's all I'm saying.
Gotcha. Okay, all right. Um anything else? Very informative, thank you very much. And and not only important, I actually understood it.
Well, it helps when you put it in. Yes, we'll try, we'll try.
We must have gone to that PD. This was backward design.
That's right.
Uh yes, this was, this was great and and it is very nice to see some of those numbers.
Yeah.
It's it's very nice. I mean, you actually, you know, feeling that we we always kind of talk about before COVID, during COVID, which is kind of a gray area and are we coming out of it? And it's it's, yeah, it's nice to have a little reality check. Just on our way, so. Thank you very much. Um we will move on and we're gonna talk about MCAS resolutions. So if you guys would like to space it for some real fun, you should, you may, or you may like.
Go ignore.
My daughter sent in one from Connecticut, Hartford.
Oh, nice, yeah, I got some Western pass.
Really? And I didn't even know about this. It's been a long. All right, I am. Um I'm gonna skip uh. Actually, the policies that we have are all titled uh Title Nine policies. Uh are there any?
I do have one quick question.
Okay.
When, but reference the end, it said that um our association is being presented by the School Committee Association. Um where are they? I don't know. The ballot, the ballot, you know, and source, M A S C, July twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
But does that mean they're verbatim or have they been?
No, let me just come through our committee. Um I would have to go track down that Google notes, so.
No, 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 I don't know. They're asking specifically, but just a question of that. If that's true, I mean, so if they have been edited by us, there should be, so that that's not the site, it's a source, but it's the source and editing. Something should be noted on them that it isn't, this isn't just.
Lost today in mask.
You can go online and see all of their, what they propose as as policy. Would be nice that you sources MCAS by.
Gotcha.
Edit or or something, just so we have a note on it. Cause I'm sure some are taking wholesale and some aren't.
Can I? I would guess that most of these are, these are all.
Well, I I I looked and that's what I was wanting.
Yeah, yeah. Um are there any other questions on these? Okay, um can we then, uh this is just for the first reading, pass them as a block. Do you have anything to?
I got nothing to add to that.
Um so we have uh. Wait a minute. We have one, two, three, A C G A, A C A dash R, A C A, A C A. So there's a motion to pass these for the first read.
Shall I just read, read them through to normal doc next again, is that right?
Yeah, it's straight from just lighter meth on there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um I know that we approve policies for the first read approval. Um the grievance procedure, A C G A, uh civil rights grievance procedure, A C A R, non discrimination on the basis of sex under Title Nine, including sex based harassment, A C A B, sexual and sex based harassment and retaliation, and A C A, non discrimination on the basis of sex. And those are all part of the NOSAT Public Schools, A C G V, Title Nine Sexual Discrimination.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh any discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, raise your hands. It's voted unanimously, we move on. Okay, now we got the MCAS resolutions. Ask, let us.
Cause them.
Um yeah. Um so there are a lot of them. So I I propose that we break these into just half of them this time. There are, there's two sets, there's the new resolutions and then there are the expiring ones. So we'll do the expiring ones um the next time. And we'll just do the um and I take taken that everybody has read these. I do not want to go through them one by one um in detail unless there are questions on them. So if we if we go with uh resolution one, which is is the big one, I suppose. Um is there any discussion or um? Yeah.
Okay, I would like to um just say that first of all, making making clear that that we uh that the mass resolutions are uh um resolving that this this is what they're going to lobby the legislature for, okay? This is not something that now gonna be uh happen automatically approved, okay? Just just be clear on that. But the other thing is too, is that it seems to me to be um uh to be proven, to be looking to other ways of assessment, particularly considering we've seen the the deep, the deep learning stuff that's going on in here. Um and and it's sometimes difficult to distill that down to a multiple choice test, particularly when the multiple choice test was developed, how many years ago? Um to to take a fresh look at it and say, is there another way that we can measure the progress of these students? I think would not be, it is, it is, it would not be uh an exercise that we we should, we should ignore. I think it's something that's that they should. So I'm, 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 I'm in favor of of a resolution one, I don't know.
Any rest? It is a bit of a.
Legends, yeah.
But I I agree with you and I think that um certainly um this piggybacks on the ballot initiative, assuming that it um it passes. Um and and in fact, MCAS would not go away. It could still be used as a measure. It's just that it wouldn't be a measure that would.
Graduation.
May be a graduation requirement. So but I also believe, and I think that um uh different organizations have different approaches to it. But I also believe that that was my question when I said if we're gonna get a, get rid of this graduation requirement, then we really do need to make sure that we have measures in place that can document student learning um in a variety of ways. And I was wondering before I saw this resolution, how that was gonna take place. And I think it puts the onus back on Mass Department of that, you know, the um Department, yeah, of Desi. And so um and hopefully in a way that brings in a lot of stakeholders into that process. So I agree with this recommendation.
Yeah, I have some, I I think there's a lot in here. I, there's parts of it that I agree with and there's parts that I don't think I'm ready to say yes. So I don't know if you can split them, although we never split them up before, but um like the moratorium, I'm not in favor of that. Um I I feel like there's steps, like therefore be resolved or like different steps in a process, not all together in one piece. That's my opinion on it.
Yeah, I have an issue with the way this is written. First of all, I don't, not sure I agree with all the wherlasses. So they 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 make some assumptions and conclusions and statements in there that I I I'm not sure I follow. And and then they've got four, therefore, uh it's it's such, for me, such a convoluted rumpel with the resolution. And I have some real issues with that. I I just, I I understand where they're trying to go, don't disagree with it. But again, it's kind of how you do it and I I'm not sure you throw the baby out with the bathwater, which I think this does. And so I I have an issue with it.
Yeah.
You're the teacher.
Well, I I have similar thoughts. I feel like um it's it's not, I don't know, at at least for my whole career with MCAS, the the MCAS is not the problem. It's it's how the schools allow it to impact their day to day and their and their teaching and curriculum and and I think when it first came out, it was great for some schools because they were struggling to um meet some very basic achievement goals. Um but at this point, it like, if you're doing school okay, your kids are gonna do okay on the MCAS. Um we don't, we don't mention it until a week before and the kids just know they get a little extra recess. Like this, it's not, it's it's not, yeah, they get some candy or something like it's, and and the problem is the the teachers who say, and it still happens, it happens in NOSAT schools, like I'm gonna get fired if you don't do well or uh things like that. So the the problem is how schools let it affect them. And um I I agree with Judy on like the wherlasses seem to be directing a lot of blame at the test and it's it's MCAS only has the power that you give it. And if you think it's, if if you've got a leadership in your district or school that thinks it's important, but if you're, I don't know, our goal should be uh turning out critical thinking, creative students who look at MCAS like, oh, I can, I can do most all that. And it's, we've been looking at the same test scores for twenty years, but nothing, MCAS hasn't hurt our kids and it hasn't necessarily benefited our kids. It's it's three days out of their spring and it's it's whatever, there's the other hundred seventy seven days that uh what we do with them is is what's more important to me. So I I I just get frustrated with the anti MCAS energy because it's, there's so many bigger problems in in schools uh to deal with that. The MCAS, uh I'd be curious just around the graduation requirement, which this doesn't, resolution doesn't talk about, but like how many kids in NOSAT have actually not received a diploma because they don't, because of an MCAS requirement? That's, is that?
That would be dead.
Is that, is that real? Is that, is that a real thing that happens? Uh and and how many do we, do we not give a diploma to each year? Um just as a parent and community member, I've never come across someone who's been denied a diploma for MCAS. Um so I'm a little curious about that, but as far as this resolution goes, I I I think it's casting too much blame on MCAS for problems that uh were not caused by MCAS, but.
Got anybody else? Just.
I did, I mean, a quick time, the problem with anything I can say, you have a bureaucracy, there are two different bureaucracies. You've got education bureaucracy and you've got a teacher bureaucracy and and they don't always interact or work well with each other. The problem is the students would want to, yeah, or get the the wrong end of the stick as a result of it. Um so I don't know, I don't, I don't see this as an answer. Um and I'm not sure even what it's communicating that is positive in that process. So I do believe assessment is important and I believe having some tool of assessment is important, but I agree with you that it you know, we, you know, the trouble, education's behind. So if 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 somebody, the business comes up and you can sell it to them, they'll hop on, but they have a very difficult time creating stuff.
I also have the the issue with the moratorium is if you don't, if 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 you want MCAS to go away, find something to replace it before you do away with it. I I do, I I because and knowing the way your offices work and it could be a decade. Um and so I I I understand what's behind it. I just am uncomfortable that this is the way to go, go about it.
And I'll go back and I I do agree with you with uh moratorium is that, you know, if there is going to be that change and then it depends on the ballot. If it does get passed, if there is going to be a change, it does have to be a process. It can't just be a moratorium immediately. The other part, Josh, to answer your question and answer the chair, is that there are many kids, there are a population of kids that don't learn the same way that everybody else does. And those are the kids that are not gonna be able to get graduation, get a diploma. And so what they get instead is a certificate of attendance. So there is a certain population of kids that are, I think in every school district and they can get the data for.
I don't know.
Get the data for, and then the kids, the different ones, you know, you can just imagine who they would be. So um but it would be interesting to get that kind of data, but could they have measurements um that they need, whatever the standards are, if they were measured in a different way?
They actually have it. So if if a kid said the test there does not pass the MCAS, there are other additional steps that they can take to still get their graduation permit, like an individualized plan. So I think that is recognized currently as part of the process. And what I've read in my research is that kids do this afterwards and are able to still graduate because it's a very specific individualized program. So there's ways, it's not just if you didn't pass, you're done.
You have it in tenth grade.
Grade and then there's some mechanisms in place to help kids figure out.
They they get to make it work. Twenty students.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't matter how intense.
Okay, so uh so resolution one, um.
Would we agree with, agree with, and would we pass it with reservation?
I I I I mean, I don't know that we need a motion.
Well, somebody's gonna go, we're just, we're just work, somebody's gonna go.
Yeah.
Go for us, one of these.
Okay, so.
And if I may, I would really like to be that person.
Yes.
You don't get the meal though.
And because of what he suffered last year, if he still wants to do it, his reward is because of the suffering. He suffered last year, right? So. So. Yes, I, I mean, I, I, again, can we just kind of take a sense of?
You can also just not vote. It's an option.
All right, so let's just. How many people would like to support resolution one?
In entirety, right? Not the entirety. It can't be, I hope they have, have to.
You can explain.
Do they make motions on the floor?
Why not support it?
It's entirely possible that, that, that there will be a vengeance on the floor. I mean, that has happened before. It makes me just furious when they start. Calling for revenge for, for, for comments and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
But. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we can, it's entirely possible. We could say, you know what? Uh, uh, Nauset, just as an example, Nauset would approve this, this resolution if such, such and so.
I, I don't wanna go through every single.
Right, but I mean, give me, give me a sense of, of, of what it is, you know, I can, I can.
My sense is that they need to go back and rewrite this and rethink it, but that's not gonna happen. So.
I guess, I guess maybe to put it in a little bit of a package from my perspective is if the ballot question passes. Do you know what it does? I mean, we're gonna know by then, won't we?
Yeah, but, but we're not gonna know by the time we're, let's make these days. I don't wanna get into the ballot question. I mean, we're not. That, that is a political issue. I mean, I think, all right, can we say our reservations are, some of their.
So I mean, I, I don't, I don't, no, I don't see if there's any way this is gonna be corrected on the floor or whatever. I, I.
I've only done this once, and I.
I don't think it's.
Just say, you support it or you don't.
And I mean, the other side, just so we're clear here, authors of this have voted directly.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's interesting. Some sort of radical. And they're, and they're going to be losing Desi and relentless like you see. So of course it's going to be, be negotiations, right?
Right. But if they're lobbying, if they're lobbying Desi, they wanna, they wanna go and say. You know, ninety percent of our school committees supported this. And I, I don't want to be one of that ninety percent. I mean, that's what I think they're looking for here, is to go in.
Maybe one of the two.
Right. And so I think that, I, I just think it's too flawed. So. I mean, I don't know how other people. Who, I mean, anybody really wanna support this? Anybody wanna strongly support?
I'm going to go the last therefore, but I can't.
Okay, there she goes.
I can't support it.
All right, onward, there you go, Rick, you got it.
All right. That was clear as night.
Strike everything except for the lesson.
I, I, I said it's, it's, it's too flawed and, and needs, needs to work.
Needs work, yeah. The attendance, two, the attendance age.
If we increase the attendance, compulsory attendance age. We would be the only state in the union that goes above eighteen, eighteen years old. Although there is some indication that Texas goes to nineteen, but. We would, we would be the only state that. It goes above eighteen.
No, it's above sixteen, above nineteen.
Sixteen, oh, okay.
Yeah, so eighteen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
They're trying to move it to eighteen.
Move it to eighteen, yeah, okay, so that's where everybody else is, yes.
That's where everybody else is, eighteen, the rest of it.
Yeah, there are only a couple of, very, very excuse states that.
So having worked with this population of students. Oftentimes they just hang on until they can drop out. And I think if there were other. Motivators to keep them in until they were eighteen, might make the schools work a little harder to keep them engaged. And.
You think forcing them to stand is the way to do it?
It's not about forcing. I think it's knowing that this is. How are we, where are we failing with these kids?
But I mean, the question that comes under this, I mean, is, if I read this right, or is it compulsory? So if you're not in school at eighteen, sixteen, the police can come drag you, kick you, school, I mean, it's.
Well, there's, yeah, and, and I was thinking about, do we need increased attendance officers? So, yeah, they have to be in school till eighteen, they have to be in school before they go to sixteen, their sixteenth birthday, they can sell.
Right, so this is saying that the change at the eighteen.
Right.
So, so there, there is also funding implications, correct? So in other words. Uh, the state is only funding, funding students who. Is sixteen. So if a kid is beyond that, that kid doesn't count in, in school funding, is that right? No, no, it's, it's fine, what do you call it?
Drop out.
No, 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 right, if they're not, right, but their kids up to twenty-three. Oh, all right. We're required to provide a teaching.
Right, but if they drop out of school.
They don't attend, they don't.
And there's alternative high schools that would take kids and also.
We have, we have, we have.
We do.
We do.
Yes, all right, so.
As there's, we're seeing there are two, we have, we know, we're bad.
I'm just, all right.
So do we support, do we support this?
Personally, I think that might give some kids, like sixteen, you have a different perspective than you may at seventeen or eighteen. So if they can get that over a hundred, that might keep a lot of kids, like they might turn that equation around. So I would be, I mean.
I was kind of surprised it wasn't eighteen.
Right, and, and also the age too, so it kind of makes sense.
Yeah, 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 all right. So, all right, so. Resolution three saves storage of firearms. Anybody have any comments on that one? Sounds good, yeah. Uh, school bus stop arm surveillance. Um, and, yeah, why not? Sounds like the safety issue to me.
That's, uh, video cameras on the stop sign.
Yeah.
On the outside.
Feel the ticket.
Yeah.
Without, right, otherwise.
I didn't realize there were so many accidents like this. I mean, that's, he's kind of staggering numbers, so. All right. Okay, five, aligning taxing authority, which requires local interviews.
It affects.
No, I was, I was gonna ask, ask Judy. Having, having chaired the budget finance committee for so, for so many years. Does, 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 doesn't this make sense?
Yeah. I, I think, I mean, I.
There's been something, I, I've seen past resolution, I mean, this is not, it's kind of a kind of a regular.
Yeah. I mean, for, yes, for, it's just asking to increase the municipality's levy, wasn't it, right?
For schools, yeah. And so that would eliminate the need to do.
Right, and put that target on, we're doing this because the school, you know what I mean, it takes away that sort of stigma that's been created. By trying to meet that.
And because two and a half is almost, is, is, doesn't exist anymore.
It's, 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 that, that, that's the real, then the real solution is to rebuild to a math.
Or, or just.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
No, no, just involve for certain things, you know, because then, again, with the, with the, with the. With an override, that's a, you have to do that every year.
Yeah.
But if you have the levy limit in it to two days, then it's a lifetime charge.
No, I think it's, I think it's, I think it makes sense. And it does take that target off your back. Okay, six, supportive legislation to approve the physical health of rural school districts. I'm all for improving the physical health of rural school districts.
I did look it up, Antura, wealthy, they're priority level one rural district. Rooster Eastham and Nauset are full priority level two districts, and Orleans is full priority level three. So we're all listed on there. Just because we're so rich, you know?
It's good, we got stables and Wendy's.
It's all in relief, right?
One of the wealthiest in the country.
It's the oldest, it's the oldest.
Pretty up there, oh, no.
Yeah, it's, it's at the elementary school, you could, it's very across the board.
No, oldest, yes. I mean, they, they bring down the average by. Tons, okay, seven.
Yes, they've got, I mean, the, the actual recommendations are pretty broad and fairly vague. I looked them up just to know what I was actually weighing in on. And they have, like, a lot of these have a lot of money attached to them. So where it goes is, I'm, I'm in support of. Supporting with my brain, but just to say, I feel like it's a big, it's a big resolution to tackle.
I don't know where, so I, I, all of these, many of these are sponsored by school committees.
Those are all, those are all.
But I'm, I'm, I can just imagine sitting and sponsoring a master.
We sponsor on next year's.
Uh, fully adjusting chapter seventy-eight for inflation.
Well, I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean.
No, yeah, like how you fund.
Yeah. Okay, eight, equitable, yeah, equitable funding for non-regional. School districts with high transportation costs, okay? I, I don't have an issue on this.
Bad for us, and we have not been, regional transportation, again, we've got, no funding. It's supposed to be funded at a hundred percent. It's never been in my limited experience with the system.
Would this be for our elementary system?
Well, no, because it says in, in the first therefore. In the middle, it says they will have access to support similar to the regional districts. When costs are extraordinary. So that right there stopped because. Who's gonna, who's gonna define extraordinary? I, 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 I. Without.
If the states gotta, gotta defend it, then nobody's gonna get anyone.
Right, right, number one. Number two, the question is, are they just gonna take money?
Right, right.
From the regional transportation?
That we don't, but our.
So I, I, I think I have to say no on this one because it's just true. I'm not too sure, it's, it's, to me, it's like a little shell game, and I'm not too sure.
Why is the other question, do other school systems get transportation, some transportation reimbursed or not at all? Elementarys, I don't know.
No, the elementary, yes, no.
So.
We are the only ones.
Regional.
But they are elementary schools.
No, but I don't think our elementary schools would probably have extraordinary costs because they share with Nauset. So they're not gonna benefit.
And their, their transportation areas are so much smaller.
So I, I, I just, I don't see that this would help our elementary schools, and I think it has a possibility of, but any reasons. And so I would have to say no on this one. Was, if anybody's. Okay, the next one is vocational and technical school. I, I have to say, I have no opinion on this, so anybody's welcome to jump in, yeah.
I think nine and ten, they kind of combine, like, once in nine, they actually throw it again in ten, which is interesting. I don't know. Growth, so I don't know what that is, maybe if they don't get one test, they will have another opportunity, but.
I. I don't, I.
I mean, I can see where technical schools would have some greater costs, right? Like, if you think, like, I was recently at Plymouth. South, I think it's on the south, and it's a, it's a, it's a trade school and a high school, right? So one half of it, you know, you have this, like, auto body shop, like, you can visibly see it, it's an unbelievable facility. And so I'd imagine because of those types of things, that they would have higher costs, right? The different shops that they have.
Barber shop, the restaurant, they've got the childcare. It is unbelievable.
What every high school should do.
It seems to make sense, they would have greater costs, I just don't, I don't know enough about that beyond just.
Well, the question is, is are they, how MSBA treats them, are they treated all the same? I mean, there's.
Great funding. It says they assess them all at equal value right now. Currently assesses all school building projects at equal value.
I mean, it's a percentage, they're reimbursing a percentage, and your, your building is that much more expensive to build than your.
Right, right, yeah, and the percentage is based on wealth of the population, it seems. Seems. Although, I mean, although, just to be clear, MSBA gets very screwed on what they pay for and what they won't pay for, maybe, so, you know, they, they. They're.
It's interesting that was.
I, I just, I just, I have stayed.
Yeah.
Truly, I just.
There are public schools in the state that get zero percent from MSBA, so that could be a resolution to start with right there. True, that's true.
All right, we sufficiently covered those. All right, the other ones are the expiring reservations, and we'll do those next time.
Before they expire, hopefully.
So that's what happens when there's no track on them, that's the idea.
I have never seen this. I didn't know that we had, it says in here sometime, the twenty twenty-three delegate assembly approved an amendment.
We saw it four years old.
So that was only two years ago. Three years.
Well, again, I don't, but I mean, never before have they, we had to.
Right.
So three years of cycle.
But, yeah, and prior to that, they say this.
Went away.
So, yeah, so that.
So, all right. So we got that done, and now we're on eight, the last one, okay. So we're gonna have a search committee, okay, this is our last thing to do. Um, at the joint school committee medium. We, everybody agrees, there was no, oh, there was. There was discussion, discussion. Um, we are going to have a search committee composed of eight people. One from each of the elementary schools and four from a region. And this is the first time the region will have.
We know, it's an upgrade.
We, before we had two, and it was really unbalanced. Because the region is at least fifty percent, if not sixty percent.
Student population.
And student population, and it was a four and two, and it can make a difference.
I think one of the things we learned is that the experience that the elementary schools have. I think one of the things we learned is that the experience that the elementary schools had with the superintendent in the. Uh, the region had with the superintendent, it's a day and night, they can't. They don't, it's a day and night, you know, and so. It's important just that we have.
Right.
The concerns of the region are at least.
So, and this way. And we also vote, we vote Union Fifty-four. And we vote region, so that's fifty fifty. So now we will basically. The composition of the, of the search committee is better. Be more balanced with how we vote and how we. Our, our, our size. Um, so this is a good thing. And what I said then also. Was that we would appoint, um, four, four members, but one from each town. So that, again. The search committee will have. Four from elementary schools, four from the region, and two from each town. Foster.
Town will be represented.
So that equals each town will be represented. So, um, that met no objection, so that's how we're moving forward. Um, so, uh, we, the search committee is scheduled to be first time on August twentieth. Actually. That month, October twenty-second. Um, so. We have more people that would like to be on the search committee than we have spots, so. Um, my, what I would like to do is to nominate the most senior person. From each town, each of the town representatives. With the. The logic that. That person has served the longest in this district. Uh, in this committee. Um. And. Rather than drawing straws. So that's what I would like to propose going forward. So that would basically be Chris, and I know it's self-serving, it's me. Um, seniority sometimes, yeah, um, Maura and Tom Phillips. So. Um, if there are no objections, uh, we will.
But I, I don't have a question out of objection.
Um. Yeah.
Um. Just curious of. The capacity for, or, or availability of, of like, non-voting participation. I, I.
Yes, there will be.
I, um. I have thoughts.
Yeah.
And feelings and, um. And, uh. Would love to have some, and, and, um. Now that I'm ethically allowed to participate in some of this stuff, uh.
Oh, yeah.
About that.
Wow, it's hot.
Yes. The only reason I got divorced. So I could vote up. Yeah. Um, I would be, uh, I, I would love to. Even if it's just attending some meetings and.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Um.
Now, something else.
So it's along this line. So we have, with our regional meeting, have updates, like, be updated throughout.
We, we will, um, as, uh. So the process is yet to be designed. That's what the search committee is gonna do. It will, I assume. We, the first thing we have to do is to, um. Hire a search firm. Because. We, we're not gonna do this ourselves. I mean, you need somebody that's. You're gonna advertise, that's gonna advertise and that's gonna get out there, that's gonna go through all this, that's gonna kind of, kind of run it. Um, and hopefully that can be done. Like, right away, and we can get this rolling in November. Um, then we need to. You know, design and have focus groups with, with school committees, just with the school committees. Um, also do surveys, so we go out to, um, which we did last time and. But like.
It would be.
To parents.
Especially community members.
Sure, and we don't. We. Would not be productive, I don't believe, to do in a public meeting. Uh, and so how do we? Is there, is there a way that this body can get together?
That's why we get the search consultant to tell us.
Yeah. That would help us.
Help us to.
Because you can do surveys with staff, you can do.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you could also have an executive session, could it?
You know.
I mean, it's one of those subjects in the logic that we pick, I mean, hiring is, but because it's not, it's a, it's.
The only thing that, that is an executive session, as I recall from last time, is. Your first group of candidates. So you've got fifty people that apply. We should, we should be, we should be so lucky. Um, uh, out of the fifty, ten. Are viable. Maybe. Um, so the first group that you interview. Um, can be done in an executive session, and that's for the privacy. Of, uh, of that candidate. Um, once you name the finalists or the semifinalists, once you go through that preliminary screening. It's all.
It's public.
But it's all public. It's. It's. Yeah. Yeah, so, um.
Right, but the content is.
Um, so, yes, but take your points. Um, everybody needs to get. Their input in is to why. We wanna see it.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, uh. Sometimes I worry about, uh. Initial filtering by the search.
Mm-hmm.
Agencies and, and just. Making sure that they really understand. What our hopes and dreams for Nauset Public Schools are and that. I, I don't know, I, I've never worked for a search. Firm, but I just, I worry that sometimes they're, like, their idea of what a school superintendent should be. Is maybe guiding them through some of the original. Yes, no.
Right.
And.
Well, I think the first.
Awesome superintendent in there who wants to work for us, and we may never know.
The first group that comes out, um, is just those that don't need qualifications. I mean, that's, you're always gonna, you know, have somebody who's, uh, that. Works at Wendy's and thinks, oh, this sounds good, you know, whatever. That's.
If I needed.
But. But I was just, just gonna say, but, um, I, as in, in last time. Uh, the, the, uh, search committee insisted on seeing. We, the, the firm can say, you know, we don't, we think these are out. And it was like, okay, great. But we're like, that's fine, yeah.
Sprinting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, unless you get. Yeah.
I just want to say that there is some indication, things that I have read. This indicates that a lot of these search committees, uh, are engaged in a positive feedback role, not always, and look at your district and say, okay. This is what your district looks like. So we're gonna give you a candidate that looks like your district. And so that, that tends to. It tends to. Yeah, limiting factor.
Yeah, it's, yeah, right, so, uh.
Prepare that. So just to be clear, what in the past, you know, the county's been in another case, we haven't had, I mean, having qualified, you know. If we have a choice of talented people, that would be the best outcome to hope.
Right.
Um, in the past, that has not been what we, what we've got. Um, and so being part of, you know, the things that we wanted to pass. Like, leave, we're gonna attempt to make sure we don't do, getting early notice is the first one, so we can get this going and starting. You, you know, we had some very talented people and lost them because also we were too long on our decision process, so we.
Don't think that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and that's, they're, they're not, so we gotta make sure that we are. That what we do is effective and efficient and quick. I mean, you know, when it comes down to making the decisions, you gotta make sure that we, we do it, because you don't wanna lose those quality candidates. Uh, so they gain to it and having a good, um. Firm. I think firms.
And, and once, and once the finalists, um, are selected. These are three to five or whatever. Um, then there's a lot of opportunity for people to get involved because we go visit their district. They come here, we'll have, you know, focus groups here with them, and they'll go out and see all things. So that there's, there's a lot of, of. Of time in there, but.
It'll be a larger group, meaning there's the eighth, but then there'll be community members added on to that, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ministry.
Absolutely. Last time we got, we got students and, and involved in it. Uh.
Because I, one of my concerns is, is that even though the experience being within the district. I don't know what quality. Some, if the folk, poor folks have educational experience, and they have worked in schools or worked in, in education, and they're kind of know it from the inside out. So hope in having. Teachers and administrators. Caregivers. They help all of it, you know, um, because that was a concern.
One thing that could be really valuable, like, already, you know, the comment that you just made and that Josh made, like, if this group puts together questions or ideas that they have right now.
Concerned.
For that first meeting that we can bring, if that, that's where we go to that group, that'd be great. I mean, because everybody has different thoughts about how.
Now that I'm becoming such a Google expert. I, I, I'm wild with Google. You've got to watch out.
They aren't be around much longer, the antitrust is.
Just what I hear in the background.
I learned it.
Um, I'll put up, I can put up a Google Doc and everybody can go in and put in their, their thoughts and their.
So.
To be public. To put in your thoughts, your questions.
There's no deliberation. It should be okay, but we didn't. And we might wanna have it, maybe if preparations.
Nice, that's a good question. I have the search firm option. So will they also help us understand what we need to do and where we need to be competitive against other? Districts? So not only looking at the people coming in, but also helping us. Figure out, like, what were, how to negotiate with these people and all that as well.
Yes. To negotiate the terms of the contract once you select somebody?
Right, right. Or like, even just like, if people candidates are asked during the process, like. A bulk, bulk heart range of, like, salary and all of that, or, um, relocation or all of that, like, will be.
Housing.
Yeah, because, I mean, if people don't live here, that's gonna be a big thing that.
It's part of the reason why, and there isn't, just to be clear, there is not. Very contract, there isn't, there isn't, um, what's, money stipend for housing, stipend for any windshield, so.
Innovation.
Which is somebody with you.
Uh.
I just didn't know that search firm would plus with someone.
A lot of them, what, what they said, they'll, I mean, they tear it, they tear it to whatever you want. So if you want them. To come in and help that. Certainly, if. I think if they're, if they're hearing these questions from the candidates, they will, they should pass them on. I, it's up to us of whether we go out on the, on the advertisement and give a range of salary. Or you just say it's negotiable, though I. Most of them that I've looked at, they just say.
Right.
Negotiable within a range or whatever.
Know.
Everybody.
So they know it.
Everybody that applies will know what the superintendent is.
Well, and I think part of the, like you said, the advertising is. They're gonna look at, when the test scores are, I mean, there's a lot of public information about our district, but, which is really. Why it's really good that we have a new. A new website, and we have, you know, some of this other information out there, but I think helping sell our district to somebody who might from a home is to be okay. How do we make the enticing, this is fabulous place to live. It's a good though.
Well, just have Fiona and the. Tori pictures, uh, run the, run the show.
Get some students like this, who talk to the. They, they'd be better. Girls than we would be.
Should I, uh. Make a, do we need to motion to approve you guys as our representative?
Uh, sure, why not?
All right. Yeah. Who were they?
Tom.
Tom.
And this to me, Tom's okay with it.
Yes. I would make a motion to, uh, appoint Tom.
Mark.
Chris.
More, more.
Judy. More and Judy, Judy is the, uh, uh, reps to our. Um, superintendent hiring committee, search committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Well, right.
All right, everybody. Um, all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Good luck.
Tell them.
Yes. Oh, we still.
Um, all right, I think that we can adjourn, right?
Let's do adjourn.
Just a quick note, I'm sorry, it's your company information, your.
Sorry. I am. I'm sorry.
The regional.
I want to get it under three hours.
Some committee has not met, but we've got, had some communication, and that'll be addressed in our next review. Uh, that we share with you all. We're not gonna, no, we will not, we probably have, um.